Good evening and welcome to the School Committee meeting of November 16th, 2022. This meeting is being recorded and hopefully being broadcast. Do we know if it's being broadcast?
Yep.
It's being broadcast as well?
Yes.
On WHCA? We hope it's being broadcast. If not, it will be recorded and posted. And if you could join us as we start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America under God, in thy name, all shall prosper.
I am going to save, actually, I'm going to do it now because we have, we do have some important dates to remember, so I'm going to just do it at the beginning of the meeting because at the end of the meeting, we're tired and some folks will have already left, so we have a captive audience, so we might as well hit those important dates now. So tomorrow night, we have a presentation from DESI Director of Finance, Rob O'Donnell, on Hold Harmless at 6:30 here. That is something that we would encourage anyone listening, as well as members here to attend. It'll be a presentation on what that works, and it's a big piece of our funding, so for those that attend, we would love to have you November 23rd and 25th. School is closed for Thanksgiving recess. On December 5th, there's a community forum on the Whitman Middle School building project at 6:30 at the Whitman Middle School cafeteria. And on December 7th, we'll be having another school committee meeting at 6:30 here. Now that we've covered that, if anyone is here for public comments, feel free to come up to the mic. And Marshall, if you just don't mind introducing yourself, as well as your street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marshall Lotito, 100 Lazell Street in Whitman, President Duval PTO. Mr. Forthe invited me to kind of speak about the PTO, but we weren't able to get that on the agenda, so we'll get that in a future meeting, I think. Real briefly tonight, I just wanted to, through the chair, invite the committee and the administration, anyone in the audience. The Duval PTO is hosting its annual basket raffle this Friday at the Whitman VFW from 6 to 9. We have over 100 prizes up for a raffle auction. We've got an Oculus VR headset. We've got some really cool experiences for the kids to bid on. It's a great event and directly helps fund some of the programs that we run over the Duval PTO. So far this year, we've contributed about 12 grand in direct aid to students and teachers, funding things in and outside of the classroom and community events. Now it's time to rebuild those funds, so this Friday, we'll be doing our best to try to build that back up. Hope to see anyone there, and thank you.
Thanks, Marshall. And you want to, just send me a note afterwards, and you have an email, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll make sure we get something on the agenda. All right, awesome. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anyone else here for public comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our Student Advisory Council, and I see a number of smiling faces here, so. Do you want to introduce them?
Yeah, so we had an election last month. We elected five student representatives. Their names are Chloe Drake, Ruby Scriven, Noah Roberts, Riley Getchel, and Emma McKeon. Emma's at work tonight, she can't make it, but four of the members were able to. So if you guys want to come up and take the time to talk about some of the topics that you mentioned prior, and speak to the school committee, feel free.
Don't all jump up at once.
I was going to say, nobody in that group is shocked. Come on.
Hi, I'm Riley. As I introduced myself at the September meeting. We wanted to ask about potentially starting a program where we could take a field trip of sorts and visit the middle schools and elementary schools to meet with councils of the students there in order to gain their opinions on what they think of their school experience, how they're feeling, what resources they might need, or what's going well for them. So I was wondering how we might get that kind of thing approved through the school.
It's approved.
It's approved. Thank you. I guess we'll start planning.
We'll figure it out with Dr. Jones and the principals.
Awesome.
We'll put something together during the course of the school day, but this is something we talked about last year a little bit, is getting you guys, this group out to the other schools, so you represent the entire student body, not just the high school.
Perfect.
So we can figure that out.
Thank you. That's definitely our goal, because last year, a lot of it was focused on the high school, as it was our first year running it, and we're excited to get out into our community more. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everybody.
Oh, Mike. There you go.
Hi, everyone. I'm Noah. I also introduced myself at the last meeting, but as I already said, we're still working on outreach to the rest of the district besides the high school, so as of tonight, most of our comments will focus just within the high school issues. And something brought to me by a couple of students at the high school, actually, was regarding the night school program. And a lot of the, a couple of night school kids that recently were daytime students transitioned into night school, but they were disappointed when hearing they wouldn't be able to attend the regular graduation with their students they've been with throughout their regular K-12 experience, besides transitioning their last few years. And they were just looking for a voice so that they could have like the option to not only be the, I know, they understand how important the high school night graduation is, and a special night for everybody, but they would just like to have the option to be able to walk with, across the stage with their friends that they've been with for so long. So I just hope that this would be something that we could consider at a later meeting.
So my recommendation would be like, they schedule a meeting with Dr. Jones, because Dr. Jones controls both of those graduations as part of his role as building principal. The night school graduation is actually a real personalized experience, too, so I think that's a, it's a delicate conversation. It's two different diplomas as well. So not to say that things can't be modified, done, but that's a Dr. Jones discussion and call, and a further conversation has to take place.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jeff, can I just add, if there's any element to that decision-making, if it's not solely Dr. Jones, if it's handbook-related that we, as a committee, have approved, or if it's policy-related, I'm not sure if there are actual graduation policies, so can you report back to the committee and let us know if that's something we need to take action on in order to maybe further it along or help these students?
Thanks, Noah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ruby Scriven. One of the concerns I've heard from students in the school is that the water bubblers still aren't turned on. Like, we have access to like the filtered waters, like above, but like some kids that don't have water bottles, or any like cups or anything, don't have access to filtered water during school.
So just from my knowledge, the filtered water will only be coming through the filtration system. I don't know if we can actually turn on the bubblers again, and we shut them off for COVID just because of the transmission area. I can look into that, not sure. But it won't be filtered if it's coming out of that bubbler piece. The only, is the, and the reason we put those filters in is that kids could get filtered water instead of just regular tap water. Well, we could look into that, too. I just don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
Ruby, about how many kids may not have water bottles?
Um...
I could load up a car that costs them.
I'm not sure, like, or even just access to like cups, maybe next to the bubblers or something like that. Like, I know they sell them at the cafeteria, but it's still costs money.
Yeah. That's a good point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe give everyone a water bottle.
We could do it. Plenty.
It's like my kid, they'll forget it.
Yeah, yeah, 500. You guys have anything else that you want to talk about? You good?
This is my first time here, but I had an issue about the safety in the bathrooms. We do have teachers that, you know, go around during like class time that check the bathrooms, but I feel like there's still students who sometimes are in danger, not in danger, but there's things that go on in there that teachers don't always see, and it's affecting other students as well, going in there just to use the bathroom. So I was wondering if there could be extra supervision in there, or...
So my recommendation is, a few of you have some issues, go see Mr. Guggins, Mr. Fleck, Dr. Jones, kind of give specifics of where, how people feel, and where those areas might be, and we can always add a set of eyes, but the challenge is not knowing where, and if it's a specific location. Like, remember last year, Dr. Jones kind of isolated the bathroom down by the TV studio in the store?
Yeah.
Because we have a lack of teacher presence down there.
Okay.
So we isolated that. So if there's areas in the building that students feel aren't being covered by teachers, let the administration know.
Okay.
Because there are, it doesn't have to be, you know, people storming the bathrooms to see what's going on in there, but we can always add some eyes. But it's always helpful to know where those areas are and where people feel uncomfortable.
Okay. Thank you.
You guys good?
Yeah, I mean, I think just as a general comment, just kind of listening tonight. So I think anytime we get feedback, it's great, right? So we need to have it. It's good. It's helpful, regardless of what it is. But I think in kind of listening to Jeff, there may be an opportunity sometimes for you guys to kind of find that building principal, right? Because there are principals that do run out of the buildings and have that conversation. I think, maybe as you're having the conversations, I think if you're feeling like, wait a second, we're not resolving the issue, or things like that, then maybe it kind of belongs, you know, kind of having that conversation, or hey, we talked about this and we figured it out, share that, too. But I think it's going to sometimes be tougher as committee members or the superintendent to kind of just jump into some of those immediate things, just because we don't have all the facts, we don't have all the informations, and that's not what we do every day, right? We're not in the building. So I think it's, hopefully that makes sense. It's really important for you guys to continue to share, because the last thing I want you to take away is don't share stuff. I really, that is not the message. But I also think that if you really want to try and make sure you accelerate some of these changes, have those conversations with some of those principals as a group, and especially if you're getting feedback from some of those younger grades, and then kind of let us know how it's going. I think, or maybe even when you're meeting with David, like that's, he'll help guide you probably with some of this stuff in terms of, hey, that's something that you should share with the committee, so. And I think that'll help us kind of evolve the group. But as another comment, I love the idea, I couldn't be more excited about the fact that you guys are taking a field trip to see the younger schools. I think as a committee, we talked about, great that we're doing this, but it's only representative of the high school. How do we make sure that we're sharing some of this feedback and understanding what's going on at the other schools? And really excited that you guys are taking that initiative to do that. That is great. Like, that's, this is going in the right direction, so. Thank you. That was my comment. I don't know if anyone else has anything, but appreciate all you're doing. Steve?
Mr. Chair, so, and I'm sure David would like this as well. This is one thing that you're going to learn in early adult life, and it's not to be forced on you now by any means, but sometimes your bosses will ask you, you know, if you've got an issue, what would you also come with as a solution? And it doesn't mean you have the answer, but if you provide that kind of feedback, I sat on Student Government here, of course, at Whitman-Hanson for four years, and I kind of got that thought early on, that way, oh, well, you know what, here, this might be a good resolution, however, we might not be able to afford it, or it doesn't fit, you know, what you folks were looking for, or whatever it may be. But just keep that in the back of your mind. I'm telling you, it will impress people, not that you don't. You already do. You've already impressed at least 10 people here, if not more.
11.
Well, actually, minus 10.
Oh, I did.
Higher.
Well, he was already impressed.
Yeah.
Both ways, mutually. Just a thought.
And if I can just add, if you have agenda items that you'd like me to put on the agenda with Mr. Howard, bring them up the week before we have a meeting. Come up, get some candy out of the candy jar. We can sit and talk, and we can put that, and hopefully, either if it's an agenda item, we can put it there, if it's a discussion for the committee, and then we can talk, David and I can talk, too, about the role of the committee and how that can help the student body, because they have specific roles outside of what I can do, Mr. Farrell can do, and the building-level principals can do. So feel free to always come upstairs. Michelle will let you in and grab some stuff. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
I think the meeting to discuss the board and review that should be more efficient.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But let us know how it's going. I don't want to lose that. Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate what you're doing. Approval of meeting minutes.
And you're free to go if you want, or you can sit here for...
Take it all in?
They may have comments.
Well, now we'll move to probably the most exciting thing of the meeting, so we'll approve the, approval of meeting minutes. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2022, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. All right, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 24th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. And last but not least, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of October 12th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Now we can move into the good stuff. Superintendent?
So the first week of November, George and I and Beth Stafford went down to the MASAC Joint Conference with MAS, well-attended conference by school committee members and superintendents. I thought, and I think Beth and George will concur, that there were some, excuse me, Nikki Shanway, sorry, Director of Equity and MTSS went. The program was really well-represented this year. A lot was on equity, diversity, leadership. I attended a couple of workshops on human resources and unions, along with regional stuff, regional agreement, assessments, all the stuff that we've had to go through. So I think it was a well-run conference. I would encourage folks, if they can get away, we were down from Wednesday to Friday, and it extended till Saturday. It's a well, it's worth shooting out there for a day if you can take off work. And also then, speaking with vendors, we were able to talk to a few vendors that can do some things for our school, and a lot of, you know, networking with other superintendents and other school committee members on what they're going through over the course of post-COVID and where we are now. I, they have specialty dinners, the commissioner spoke, I did not go to that. We ended up going out with, to a reception by our law firm. We spent a lot of money, so it was nice to get some hors d'oeuvres from our law firm. I think we paid for that, so. It was a, it was a really well-run conference this year. It was different than the past few. I thought the opportunities for learning were greater than they have in the past. The feedback that I would give them is, you know, they should break out, you know, some of the leadership pieces in, at certain times, because there were different things that, and like the regional stuff, and then the management things, there were, there were multiple things you could go to in one session, and the next session, there was nothing.
Yes.
So kind of have, stagger it so that you could bounce around. I know Nikki had a great opportunity, because every session had something on equity or MTSS. So she's got a notebook full of information that's going to benefit us as we plow through our equity audit, so.
And all the resolutions that we voted on were all passed, too. Not without some discussion. I think there was only one that didn't have discussion. They all had quite active discussions on them all. So it was very interesting to hear other districts and what their opinions were on some of those. It was, and how they got to that decision. And coming from some of their school committees were a lot smaller than ours, you know, maybe five people or whatever, and a lot of questions that they had. So I think because we're a larger committee, we came up with those things and had that, had the discussions as we went along, so it was, you know, much easier. But very interesting, very good. I went to several of the, of the programs, and it was very, I was very impressed with them.
And there were some notes on the drive. Was that from?
I don't think so. I'm not sure. You might have found something.
Not yours? Someone put some notes that I thought was helpful. They recap a couple of sessions, open meeting law.
That was Michelle.
Just some pointers. Michelle, thank you for doing that. Michelle. David?
Beth, was there any amendments on the resolutions that passed?
They tried, but none of them went forward.
Okay.
Yeah. There were a couple, like for the first one, some people didn't like the word "children" in that one. That was the resolution about the students from other places coming in as, you know, transgender or whatever. They felt that the word "children" meant little kids, and that parents would decide a three-year-old had surgery or whatever, and that child, actually, in the definition of children, it's up to the age of 18. So, you know, you had to think of it that way. So that, that didn't go at all. In fact, I think there was one person who ended up voting against that one, so. But the rest, after the discussion went, you know, there were a couple no's here and there, but they were all passed, so.
Great. Well, thank you for representing us and for taking the time.
You're welcome.
Mike, right now, in our year, yearly calendar, we have November as a special education presentation, so Director of Special Education, Mike Loesch.
Good evening, school committee members. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you again for having me here tonight. So right now, the district's actually entering its final phases in the TFM review that was conducted by the state. We're probably going to be submitting about within the next week or so for our final progress report, then we'll conclude the process. We'll be about a month ahead of deadline, which is great for us, that we can really put a close to this process and move on to bigger, better things for the district. Along those same lines, the district recently received its 2023 Special Education Determination under Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. The determination for the district was that we met all requirements. Our scores broke down as follows. Our five-year graduation rate for students with disabilities was 2 out of 4 points. Our annual dropout rate for students with disabilities was 3 out of 6 points. Public school monitoring for special education compliance was 4 out of 4 points. Problem resolution system for special education compliance data was 4 out of 4 points. Performance on special education state performance plan, annual performance report indicators was 6 out of 8 points, and data and findings of significant disproportionality was 4 out of 4 points. We definitely have some areas for growth that we're going to really look to plan and make some adjustments to in the near future as part of my transition, but I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end. The district is also coming closer and closer each week to really becoming fully staffed throughout for all special education positions. We're making slow incremental growth. We're really trying to leverage the two staffing agencies we've engaged for this process, and we're really prioritizing our students who really have our highest needs throughout the district, and trying to really get those candidates filtered out to those schools and really fill some of those positions as quickly as possible. I anticipate within the coming months, we're probably going to need these companies less and less. I think the district's really headed in a positive direction to support our paraprofessionals, to make sure that, you know, they can do what they do, and really, they are kind of the backbones of our classrooms. So we're headed in a positive direction, definitely on that piece as well. Our substantial classrooms, even with some of those open positions, are really still functioning at a very high level. I've been out in the district consistently on a weekly basis, really visiting, walking the classrooms, walking the schools, but we're really still seeing a lot of great work going on out there and supporting our kiddos out and making sure that they're making their progress and progressing along. Our staff is really working hard out there to make sure that they're doing everything they can within what they have in order to make sure needs are met and kids are making progress in classrooms. Last thing in my piece, as a part of my transition into the district, I am currently really evaluating all of our programs and settings and services. My goal is really to ensure that we're providing comprehensive services in a fiscally responsible manner with greater consistency in practices through K-12. I think through my time here, initially, in the past five months, we really do have some great programs in place, and we do a great job of supporting kiddos. I think it's the consistency piece, K to 12, that we could definitely have some growth on, and it's really just making sure that we're using those same practices everywhere and unifying them across the district, and getting a few more, a few more processes in place that support both students, teachers, and schools as a whole. We will be definitely making kind of a comprehensive recommendations and really a strategic plan for special education in the spring that I will be presenting at that time. I leave it open to any questions you may have.
Can we get a copy of that report, like the 2 out of 4, the 3 out of 6? Is that on DESI, or is that?
I don't know if they have that publicly posted on DESI. I just requested a PDF copy of it, because the copy were actually sent via email, cut off on one section, so as soon as they send me that, I'll send it over to the superintendent.
Yeah, we can get that up.
Thanks.
Drop it on the drive. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Continuing, one of our goals this year is hearing from the building principals on state of education in our district. We have two of our principals here today to present. Dr. Jocelyn, Indian Head Principal. Dr. J?
Dr. J.
Yeah. If you come up and dunk on us, talk to you.
Good evening, everyone. So again, thank you for the opportunity to really give you an inside look of what's taking place in our schools, and a lot of good things are happening. So my presentation today, I want to just break it down into the instructional, what we're doing for family and community engagement, and then the idea of the culture at the school, because one of our goals is not simply to inculcate, you know, reading, math, but also, I think it was Ash Total that says, the goal is a well-rounded education and the development of a full individual. And that's our goal at Indian Head, that we grow smart kids who know math and science and reading, but also develop good character. So in terms of the instructional piece, we do what all our schools are doing. We have a very solid PLC, professional learning communities, where every week, all the teachers, they have one set time where they met in groups, and I'm at every single one of those meetings, and we discuss instruction, they share, they plan together. We also, not just us, but the whole district has had, especially last year, a very robust multi-tiered system of support for our students, and a big piece of it is the, is Power Blocks, which is an intervention block where the kids go to different classrooms, different teachers, based on what they need, and we basically group them homogeneously based on the result of assessments. It has been very successful. We also have, as part of that multi-tiered system of support, our STAT, meaning our , it's a group like Child Find, where teachers come together for kids who really need that kind of tier three extra help to discuss those interventions. Those things are established and continuing to work. One of our goals last year was, especially after COVID, where parents were not able to enter the schools, were to really make this school a welcoming environment, where we give parents an opportunity to come and visit and see what the children are doing. So last year, we had, for the spring, every grade level, every classroom had an academic showcase where the kids prepare, whether it's like, if it's a writing piece, where they would have the first draft, second draft, third draft, or if it's a reading, whatever project they're working on, and then all the parents, there would be a time when all the parents within that grade would come, go into the classroom, look at the students' work, look at what's going on, talk to the teachers, and it was, it was a big hit. In K-1 and 2 and 3rd grade, we literally had 100% attendance, and then 4th grade, we had 95% about attendance. So this year, the teachers, it's a lot of work for them, but they've embraced it, to the point where we're doing one for the fall and one for the spring. And at the end of that presentation, which I'll show in a minute, you'll see the dates of the upcoming fall showcases in addition to concerts. And then the last piece really, which is our focus for us, is the culture, which, as I'd mentioned, the goal is not just to get kids to pass MCAS and know how to read, but really develop a well-rounded citizen. So what we've done, the goal is also to enhance the experience of the students at the school. So last year, I applied, no, actually, this January of this year, I applied for a grant with the organization All Kids Bike, where they, so we, I applied for the grant in January, we got, we won the grant in March, where they gave us $5,000 worth of bikes, bicycles for kids, 24 bikes, helmets, and a big bike for the adults. And the, our two phenomenal PE teachers worked together, and they incorporated the bikes into their regular PE, and there are pictures that I'll show, I think, as I said, pictures worth a thousand words. So that's been a big piece of our PE offering for kids, where they're learning how to ride bikes, they ride their bikes outside around the school, they ride their bikes in the gym when the weather is not, is not, and then we also had our fun run, which, yes, it was a fundraiser, but to me, what was important about it is they're interested in character development, where every day, they pick one character trait, whether it's endurance, whether it's, you know, kindness, and they develop it, and it was a big hit for that entire week in the school, and it culminated into a fun, a fun run, like on that, on that day. And then we, Superintendent Farrell also, not just in our school, but into this funiki gym, which was a big hit for us as well. And it wasn't just fun, but it also exposed the kids to cultures, different cultures, their musical, and to me, that's also not just building good citizens, but also... just building good citizens, but also exposing the kids to additional things to enhance their intellectual curiosity as well. And then the last thing that we did this year, which we hope to do again next year, we had a kindness rock. So, our theme for this year is kindness, and I think we all could agree that we could use a few more kind people in the world. And what we did was, we started working on it as a staff since last year, so our school psychologists spent the entire summer literally and collected 500 flat rocks, and our art teacher took the time during the art class, every kid decorated their own rocks with their own message on those rocks, and then we had a big assembly, and they, and then the staff took, one staff meeting where we decorated our rocks, our own messages, and then we created a kindness rocks garden, we had kindness rocks shirts, and then the ideas throughout the year, continuing to kind of like emphasize this notion of kindness for the kids. When we did our assembly, we had, obviously, I spoke to them about kindness, and then we also had the video presented to them on ways they could be kind at home with their, you know, their pets, and then we also sent that information to the parents as well to continue that conversation. So, that being said, a picture's worth a thousand words, so we'll just do about two So, that last slide is basically the last, the schedule of all the events coming up for the fall. So, I do want to say thank you to Heatherlin, who actually helped me put the slide together, and thank you again for your support of our students and our teachers. They love what they do, and the goal is to really have happy kids. As I've said to the teachers, when I first started, we went through a poem called, "May This Be a House of Joy," and that's the goal, that our school could be both a house of joy and also a house of intellectual stimulation, and we can achieve both. Thank you.
George, while you're up there, can you give two minutes on Funiche Jam?
Yeah.
Please.
Funiche Jam is a group, it's a musical group that's based on pre-K to 5 music education through movement and song. We actually first got in touch with them during COVID, because if you remember during COVID, we had a separate school, we had a remote school, and a remote school wasn't, we didn't offer any related arts to them. So, what we did as a result of that was, we made this connection, and they did remote work. Last year, they did both virtual work, and we were able to get them for the preschool. So, this year, we were able to get them for K to 2, so that was last week. The goal is to have them come back and work with our preschoolers again so that they can have it. You'll notice that when, in the related arts, we talked about related arts earlier in the summer, one of our focuses into making that robust, we were able to get another music teacher for the middle and high school as a result of some retirements last year, and this is, again, the movement that says, I believe, and I think we believe, that we owe our children as many outlets as they can to be able to express themselves. So, this starts at the preschool level, and it goes, this year, it went through grade two. So, that's what it is, and it seems that it's working well, so we'll probably continue it. The funds from this come out of Title II, excuse me, Title IV, and it's under music and lesson movement classes that the Title IV allows, under the aspect of social, emotional learning and school climate and safety.
Thank you. So, all three schools had that. I had the opportunity, I was with George over at both Conley and Duval to see, and Joelle had that one picture with all the kids had their little frisbees on their head, they had a great time. It was just really cool to see kids having fun and learning something along the way. So, it was a really, really interesting program. Mr. Frost with middle school. Mr. Frost is blowing off conferences right now to be here.
I feel bad, I shouldn't have had a movie.
You're a rookie.
I know. So, thank you for having me here. I was here at the last one, talking about the new building, but it's exciting talking about what's going on in our school. I think probably a big theme, what I heard, you know, when I kind of hit the ground running was try to get a sense of normalcy back for the middle school kids, you know, especially with the last couple of years with COVID and whatnot, they wanted just kind of that middle school life and experience again, so we've really been working hard to get that for the kids. So, just some highlights for you, what's going on. I think within the second year, second week, coming back, we initiated Booster Bash, so it's a little different than the fun run that the kids have at the elementary level, but we had, you know, a fundraiser over just about under two weeks, which builds up to a dance, which the middle schoolers do during the day, and a bunch of fun, you know, activities, Minute to Win games that they do, and a lot of prizes are given out, so the kids were really amped up about that, and they had a great time. All classes were brought down, and, you know, it's just a lot of hype and energy around that event, so that was fun, especially to do it right off the bat, too. Another kind of sense of normalcy, we had cross-country start the year, and they had a really great season, two really good coaches that helped out. So, I think they had probably six or seven meets that all culminated to a large invitational meet that was held at Ford Quon Park, and there were a number of schools that went. So, out of, I want to say 15 schools, or 16 schools that competed, our girls placed 11th out of 15th, and our boys placed nine out of 15th, which, you know, was pretty good, and they had a lot of fun, a blast, you know, running, I loved seeing the smile on their faces. Our top boy placed 30th overall out of well over 100 kids that ran, and our top girl placed eighth overall, which I thought was very impressive. So, it was good, it was good. And then another sense of normalcy we brought back, our first dance, we had in the third week in October, the 21st, and I heard that none of these kids have ever had an actual dance before, so it was probably a little bit more packed than I thought, I mean, I figured it would be packed, but the kids had a blast, it was a good time. So, we did a couple hours, hired a DJ, and, you know, had the library open for some games and things like that, but it was a great time, so a lot of, again, a lot of happy middle school students with that. Our Turkey Trot's coming up on Friday, it's our annual race, they've been doing it forever. Kids are really excited about that, they're bringing, you know, canned goods, we're doing a canned drive this week for the fruit pantry, and accompanied to that, we have a gentleman who for years has been donating turkeys for us, so we're going to be giving well over 30 turkeys to our students who kind of win the races, and we have a poster contest and whatnot, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun, a lot of, I keep using that word hype, build up of that, but the middle school kids are really excited about that, which is good. And then, in a couple weeks, our interschool, interscholastic basketball is going to be starting up, so boys and girls will be competing with a bunch of other towns, I think I already have 10 to 12 games on the schedule, both away and home. And, well, we've incorporated a dance team, which is kind of an after-school club, that's another thing, we've got our after-school club running again, but our dance team is going to kind of incorporate performing at the basketball games as well, which I think is pretty cool, it's something that they tried last year, but they really want to kind of institute it this year as well. And some that didn't happen last year, I believe, but we're bringing back, the high school is going to come to perform for us, kind of a holiday concert that last week before winter break, holiday break, so the kids are looking forward to that, we're going to have a three-on-three basketball tournament, too, that week before, so we got a lot of fun things coming up then. December 13th is our holiday concert here, which, chorus concert, the kids have been really working hard for that, so I'm excited to watch them sing, they've come down to the office a bunch of times and sing for me, you know, our chorus teacher, Rosalie, will bring two or three down at a time, "Hey, check this out," they're good, they're great, they bring everybody to tears when they sing, they're awesome. Been a lot of focus on our 8th grade students, you know, just because they got some big choices coming up. We've already taken a field trip to South Shore Tech, and they're all coming here for an informational night as well for Whitman Hansen, and they were here earlier for the Chris Heron presentation, which I put out on social media, too, which I thought was really good for them as well. Another thing that hasn't been around for a couple of years is our Scholastic Book Fair, which we're getting going, November 28th through December 2nd, that'll be coming up. Kids are very excited about that as well, so we're prepping our library. So, yeah, a lot of fun, exciting things going on at Whitman Middle School, so a lot of time and effort, I feel like is being put into talking about the new school, the possibility of that, and the community events, but what's happening right now, even in this old building with those kids, a lot of positive things, a lot of positive things, a lot of positive energy, so we're excited.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
So, I put together a packet for you, a manila folder, so we could go through this, because there's a lot of paper, and I felt like if it was in the drive, we might get lost, and I needed to keep myself organized. So, I want to talk a little bit about enrollment, our enrollment as of October 1st. So, the first sheet that you have here is our general enrollment, and I'll go through the numbers. In pre-K, we have 101 students. Kindergarten, and I don't have to say kindergarten half-time, kindergarten full-time, kindergarten, we have 214, 1st grade is 258, 2nd grade is 228, that's an interesting dip right there. 3rd grade is 270, 4th grade is 262, 5th grade is 275, 6th grade is 277, 7th grade is 275, 8th grade is 287, 9th grade is 256, 10th grade is 257, 11th grade is 253, and 12th grade, which includes community evening school, is 316. You'll notice, and one of the things that strikes me is, we will lose between 60 and 70 students from 8th grade to 9th grade every year, to a multitude, and I'm seeing now, not just students going to South Shore Voc Tech, they're going to Bristol Aggie and Norfolk Aggie, and I've signed for both. One of the challenges is the superintendent, is I have to sign off on those students to go, and I don't want to not give them that opportunity, because I don't know those students. If they want an agricultural or another type of vocational school, I feel like they're entitled to that. However, it does go to the towns, and it doesn't come out of the district budget, but it comes out of the towns, they have to pay for those vocational schools, students, including transportation. So, just something, we want to keep our students here, absolutely, but again, as a whole, we usually lose between 60 and 70 a year, and that's been since I got here in 2010. That first document also kind of lines out race, and you'll see we have a multitude of races in our district. The next documents are each individual building and what they have for students, and that's through your purview to go through how many students we have at each elementary school, each middle school, and the high school. The second to the last page, John being an outstanding numbers guy, I had him do a comparison of last year's enrollment to this year's enrollment, and you will see, and I must preface this, this is what we sent to the state, and the state will then give us a number based upon how many choice students we have here, how many ineligible students that we would then bill the town for the assessments. So, last year, we built the town of Whitman and Hanson, 3,442, 3,442 students were assessed to the towns. Again, this is a rough number, so last year, our rough numbers were 3,556, this year, our rough numbers are 3,541. We're down 15 students.
Jeff, what's the SP after the end?
What's the what?
After grade 12, SP?
SP is out-of-district placements, special education. So, you're going to see, once the state gives us our numbers, and that will be before we issue our assessment, they'll give us a real number of choice students or students that are not eligible for us to assess the towns. But we're pretty close, you know, if I look at 3,442 last year, we should be in the ballgame, and we have had some issues with enrollment in the past, taking a tremendous dip. So, these numbers are promising, as we have now, you will see, again, if we look through total, where students are at, and the dips and the ebbs and flows, we're retaining kids, and we're getting new students moving into the district, which is a good thing. And I think now that we have a full-day kindergarten program, those students that might have gone to charter or might have gone out to choice will stay in district. You will also see that our population or our enrollment is down, not because of anything, but I think just because of birth rates and what families are doing. And we are consistent, along with the other districts in our area, that our enrollment is down. But the positive for me is it's stabilized, with the exception of grade 2. I think that's an interesting class, if that group stays together and we lose 50 to vocational schools, that's going to be a very low freshman class. But if you also look at the numbers, and I've talked to Dr. Jones about this, when I arrived here in 2010, our enrollment to the high school is about 1,250. It's under that now, and it looks like it will be around 900, a little around 900, moving forward if these numbers stay true. We have dropped over time, but for us, as far as assessments, it looks like we're going to have a balanced assessment this year with no sudden dip in, you know, 30 or 40 students either way. It looks like we should be in good shape. I'll update you when we get those current numbers, when they actually go into the budget. The next page, that last page here, is our EL students. We have 177 in district, the front page says 167, but that was, again, October 1st. We've gained 10 since October 1st, and we've talked about that growing EL population. And then I had Corin Mayet, our data specialist, break it down into low-income and free and reduced, and I will give you the definitions of what free medical, free categorical, free income, reduced medical, and reduced income are. So, free medical, Medicaid students are the ones that are directly certified through the state portal, but do not list SNAP as their source. Free categorical students are those directly certified through the state with SNAP as their source. Free income students are paper online applications that qualify for free because of their income. Reduced Medicaid DC students are those directly certified through the state as reduced, and reduced income students are paper online applications that qualify for reduced because of their income. So, I do believe, and there's going to be an online PD on EL students, Chapter 70, and reduced income or low-income students, and I know Don had sent something out to the district or to the school committee members for a presentation on Mars. I will be attending that, because I'm curious to see if our Chapter 70 funds will have a correlation due to our increase in ELs and our increase or our low-income students. But this is information that I wanted you to have, I'll keep you current with the updates as far as enrollment as we go through the course of the year.
Thanks, Jeff. For the MASC, MASSS conference I attended just Saturday, and it was Tracy Novick presenting on Hold Harmless and the foundation budget, and she mentioned... Novick presenting on Hold Harmless and the foundation budget, and she mentioned in reference to low income, so this refers to the numbers you just talked about, and the certified data with the state, and she said that there is a mechanism where every district staff can have access to the state database, and there's sometimes where you actually can match up your student with the database, so if families are receiving, and that's probably what Corn is doing or someone's doing it in our district, but it's just another way to capture our low-income population and accurately reflect that in our numbers, because that helps us to get more services for them.
Correct.
So not necessarily a question, more of a comment, that it's a lot of work for our central office to do, too, but it's beneficial, because there are families who may not necessarily tell us they qualify for certain services, but that is a database that the district has access to.
Right, and I think that's the issue we used to have, and I know we are morphing into that piece, but it used to be our numbers would come from people that would actually apply for free and reduced that came through our food services. And if people chose not to apply, we would not know that they're free and reduced. Little change now, because all lunches are free, but we still ask folks to fill out that application anyway as a secondary check to make sure that we are providing as much as we can to our students who don't have a lot, and we make sure that they're getting what we can support, we can help them as best we can. But I think that the piece for us right now is, I was always looking at that deficit of enrollment, and the numbers I see this year are more positive than I have seen in the past. So as they flesh out, and John reminds me, he's like, the state's going to chop some of that off, because those aren't real numbers. They're going to then hack it up a little bit. I'll share with you once we get those numbers from the state.
Does a follow-up to that on that last page?
Yes.
So when we do get those real numbers from the state, can we get a comparison of this year to last year?
Yes.
So like this last page, similar to kind of how other data was presented?
Yep.
Just so we can kind of see how the EL population and the free-reduced income population has changed?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
Can I ask a quick question? Hopefully, it's a quick question. As, hold on, sorry, I had to get my mind bent. How do we know how many students, or do we ever use this, are in each town, community, area, whatever? Like, I've always seen, I think, I have in the past, Whitman, and then you have a list, Hanson and Montpont, so there's two sections areas.
Right.
I mean, obviously, there's kids that will go to private school, homeschool, this or that. Do we ever track that, or is that anything that we need, or?
So we can track everything?
Yeah.
You know, we're supposed to know where students are, because even for special education services, we have to reach out to schools, George, if you want to, as you stood up a little bit. But we can track that, and that's also another piece of data I could share. Sometimes we don't know where those students go necessarily, except just as private. You want to jump in?
Yes, so we have the, there's a thing called the school attending report, and the school attending report is basically, according to the census and according to the data, every student that lives in the city or town that you're in. So what happens is that we know the students that are here, we know the students that are on homeschool, and then what happens is, out of my office, we contact all surrounding school districts, both private and public, to ask them if they know if there's anything that you have a student in your building that might attend or might come from Whitman-Hanson. The reason why we do that is just so that we can cover our bases to say, you know, was there a special relationship that we weren't aware of that this student goes to a Hingham school, you know? So, but that comes out of my office, and then you have as much data as you can on it. It's helpful that we have both a SACID number for, a SACID number for a student, which is the state assigned ID number, and then when they're here, they have a LACID. So there is a mechanism through DESI that if you feel that you have a student or you have a SACID, that state identification number, that you can sort of track them down to where the last were, so that you can make sure your records are straight. But we're responsible for trying to find every single student according to the records of the town that lives here.
I do remember you mentioning that?
Yeah.
Or somewhere hearing that, you know, we do try to track it as much as we can and find this way.
Yeah, it is a little, I will say, with the burgeoning population of EL students, sometimes that's hard, because sometimes, when they leave, what happens a lot of times is when a student leaves us and goes back to Brazil, let's say, a lot of what happens there is that they don't go to public education, so they go to private education. So when a parent leaves, they might not necessarily know the school that they're going to. So we've tried to put things in place where we have enough mechanisms in place to guarantee us that they're there, but there is a piece that then has to go through them. The State Department does have a piece in an office that helps us track students when that happens, but that is one of the things that, one of the growing pains that we're having, is to make sure that we can definitely identify when our EL students leave, so that we know that they're not saying they've left, but they've actually left and they're in school in another country.
Yeah. Thank you. That means a wealth of knowledge. I think I worked forty hours with him last week.
And he doesn't forget anything?
No, he doesn't, no.
So transportation is next. Transportation is something that I want to talk about. It's going to be a lengthy process. I'm going to give you some ideas today with short-term objectives of looking at transportation and some long-term objectives. When I say long-term objectives, by February. So this is in a multi-year process of looking at some things. So transportation has been an issue, I think, since July first of 2018, when I assumed this role. There's been an issue every year of transportation, and I think we focused in right now, we have to get this right. And there's been a lot of, this is what we used to do, and this is why, and there are some things that we've learned over the past couple of months, that things were done, you know, with folks that fifteen years ago, they drew some maps and did some things, and we have a small focus group now to look at that as a working group, to make changes. And make changes that will run by this committee, that will be transparent to the community and communicated to the parents and the stakeholders in town, so that they know when they're voting on something, what they're actually voting on at town meeting, and, you know, whether or not their child's going to get a bus ride the next year. So short-term objectives. We found out last year, when we were breaking down non-mandated transportation in a conversation with Jay Sullivan, that we were supposed to have seventy-five percent capacity in district on our buses, meaning not every bus. It was a snapshot in time that if we took attendance by how many students were assigned to that bus, if the state came down, we were supposed to show seventy-five percent capacity. So we did the numbers this summer. We made sure that we were at seventy-five percent capacity. This is the legislation. If you want to read the legislation, we highlighted the piece for you that says you're supposed to be at seventy-five percent capacity if anyone challenges that. We want to make sure that we're following the law. The second sheet that you have in your packet is actually John running the numbers to make sure that we put all eligible riders on, and that's every student that can ride our buses, both non-mandated and mandated. That doesn't mean that they're riding the bus, that they're eligible to ride the bus. And we are at seventy-six point one-three percent of ridership as of the date that we took that on ten twenty-eight. John will redo that periodically to make sure that we're there, and if we have additional ridership, and we can add a bus if need be, we will add a bus. But this right now, based on our routes, based on the numbers that we have, we are at seventy-six point one-three percent capacity. That may change. I don't think that'll lessen, but that's what we put on, and again, snapshot in time, that's what Karen assigned for the first day of school. Every eligible rider is assigned a bus.
Can I ask a clarifying English teacher question?
Yep.
About the phrasing of this law, or law, whatever it is, law.
Yep.
So in the highlighted part, it says, blah, 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 blah. The number of students transported over a period of an academic year does not equal or exceed seventy-five percent of the carrying capacity of the bus. So I don't read that as they must be at seventy-five percent. I read that as you shouldn't go over or be equal to seventy-five percent. So I don't know, like, where the clarification would come from, because again, like, I wasn't on the call with DESI, but my picking apart brain is reading this in a different way that we have been talking about it over the last couple of months.
So when I asked that question, when I asked that question to Jay?
Yeah.
I said, can we go below that? I said, do we have to? What, I was kind of like, can I fudge those numbers a little bit?
Yeah.
He said, when you certify and you sign your name, you're saying that your bus is there at seventy-five percent capacity. That was on a-
This doesn't say that.
So what are you reading?
I don't see it. I'm reading in the highlighted portion.
So, yeah, but in section, it says, no reimbursement for transporting people shall be made, and then it says, if you do not equal or exceed. So if you do not equal or exceed the seventy-five percent, then you don't get a reimbursement.
Gotcha.
So yeah, I know, there's that little no reimbursement. So they wrote it kind of backwards, not like you shall.
Double negative, right.
If you don't, then this won't happen.
So, okay, because I saw that, and I was like, hold on a second.
So your English teacher reading is working properly, so we probably could have worded this a lot more cleaner.
I read it the same way.
Okay, because I'm like, hold on a second. Okay, then that, yeah, okay.
Yes, double negative.
Then that is what it is. Thank you.
So we have put our students, and that has had changes to our routes, not necessarily, you know, numbers on the buses and length of routes in some areas. So the next documents that I've given you, I've given you a three-year outlook. The COVID year, when we had masks on buses.
Which document?
This is the next pile in that packet.
So the top says reports.
Reports starting at Conley Outbound.
Yep.
So I gave you each school, so you can look at a three-year look of 2021, 2122, and 2223. The major changes after that first year of masks this year is really to the Indian Head Elementary School, where we've taken four bus routes off and put more students on, which is lengthened time. Now, if you look at these as well, I think the goal, when Karen was putting together these routes, she tried to keep most routes to under twenty-five minutes. The amount of students on a bus, she might pack a bus, and I'm not, I don't live in Whitman, and George has more history in Whitman, but we have certain groups of students that live in certain areas, so a bus might drop off, the bus might have thirty-eight or forty-eight kids on a bus, and twenty get off at one stop, and they go to their homes, but it's one stop. So that bus route might be twenty minutes, but we drop kids early on. This has changed the Indian Head routes right now to being longer and a little bit more condensed, and I don't see that necessarily changing over time unless we make some modifications into some of the things we do, because we're sticking with the law. So again, it's a three-year look at, so that when parents ask what it looked like last year, you have the information to back it up. Most of our routes are under twenty minutes.
No, they're not.
No.
The ones that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. But the Indian Head routes, like, this is horrible, and I understand we have the law, but there's no consideration to the seven square miles that Whitman is and the fifteen square miles that Hanson has. I mean, we've got kids on a bus.
Forty minutes.
Forty minutes. We've got two bus routes that are forty minutes on.
My son's forty-five to fifty every day.
Yeah, and I just don't know, I said this in another meeting, we talk about the socio-emotional well-being.
Let's go one at a time.
Sorry.
Let's go one at a time.
We talk about the socio-emotional health and well-being of students, and after a day of sitting through school and then sitting on a bus for forty minutes, I just don't see how that's good for them. And I don't know what the morning is like, like, is this to assume that their route in the morning is the same as well? It's thirty-seven minutes or thirty-nine minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, this is really bad.
And then if you look at Hanson Middle, it's not as bad. Hanson Middle is bad.
No, and then you look at Duval and Conley, they've got fifteen-minute bus routes. Fifteen, fifteen, seventeen, fourteen. I think there's got to be consideration for the mileage that, because all of these kids in Hanson who are on the bus for forty minutes are definitely eligible students for reimbursement. So how do we fix that? And that's absolutely a question for a later date. I understand that.
Yeah, well, I think he's going through short-term. I see him all listed. He's got short-term and long-term objectives, so.
I have a question.
Yeah, but why don't you ask your question, then? I'd like to give him an opportunity to share what he's thinking.
What was the reason for the change?
To get to seventy-five percent capacity.
The law.
If it affected Indian Head the most.
It affected Indian Head the most, and if you look at, and this is the challenge, folks, because if you look at the high schools.
Where was it?
What's that?
Where was it? Before the change?
Where was what?
The percentage?
The percent? Around sixty-five, sixty-three. If you look at the high school, okay, you have long route times and less students on the bus, and that's because of where we're traveling the students from to try to get them to a certain, to be here at seven. The challenge is not entry coming in, the challenge is outbound, because the buses have to go somewhere else, and they have to get to Hanson Middle or Indian Head here. So you look at the load on the high school are smaller, and if you look at the eyeball test, they're more crowded than they were last year, but they're not packed. But this is our area of problem right here, and we're going to try to resolve that, but I don't have a resolution today. But if you look at the big picture, it did affect Indian Head, and it affected them with more students and a longer trip, but if you look at the root cause of where we're at, and again, I don't have a solution to this at this moment, it's because of, we need twenty buses at the high school that then distribute out, and the vast area that they have to go, drop off, and get to their next destination to drop, to pick up, to go home, causes that ripple effect in our transportation. So as we muddle through this year, one of the short-term pieces is we put monitors on the Indian Head bus to not help the ride, but to make sure that students are there and not misbehaving. And we implemented that two weeks ago. It seems like it's progressing well. I'm looking for some more monitors at Conley and Duval for the problematic buses that, if I do hear, put some on, but I just don't have the people at this point. So Glenn, do you have a question?
One more question.
Sure.
Do you take into account for the kids that their parents drive them themselves, or are they considered on the, like?
Every kid that's outside of the area of one point five.
Is considered on the bus whether they are or they aren't?
Correct.
Okay.
And in Indian Head and elementary, most of our kids are taking, that are eligible, are taking the bus.
Yeah, well, I just know my neighbor, he only takes in the morning. His brother picks him up every afternoon, so.
Right.
So it's not a, because of the time.
Yes, but I will tell you, it's an issue. So it's an issue that we understand, we're working on. I just don't have a solution today, and I don't know if I'm going to have a solution until next year. I don't know that yet. As we're breaking this down, part of the long term is that we are looking at a different company to do our routes. George, what's the name of the company that we're working at? School Bus? Because we were on a conference call the other day, and it seems like it's a more progressive company that will work with a region and not just a localized school district.
Yeah, schoolbusmanager.com. It's a web-based busing company. It's a web-based application that deals with busing, but what it does is it allows you, well, it actually just puts it in the 21st century. So, I mean, it overlay, their software overlays on top of Google. So actually, when we just set up the demo, he just had us at, oh, so I see you're at oh-two-three-eight-two, our zip code, and then he said, if you just give us, give me a random thirty kids, we can work with that. And the ability to see it in real time, the ability to make changes, the ability to draw a radius. So for example, when we talk about one point five or point seven-five, you can just take this tool, draw point seven-five, it'll give you all of the students within that, and then you just say, do not load them, because they would be in the no-bussing zone. Excuse me. And it really does create scenarios where you have the ability to know what you're doing in a way that is up-to-date, that is clean, that is clear, and that seems to be the way we're going to, we're probably going to go with. We would lose Versatrans, and we would go to this. We are in the process of working out the pieces that Versatrans provides us that are unique to us, but again, this is a change. When Jeff talked about it, I believe it was 1996, when the, some of the guidelines, some of the laws that were in our guidelines are the guidelines that we follow were established, and they're established for good reasons by people with good intentions at that time. But I think this has brought to light that it's time that we look at all of them and at least make it clear, make it clean, and then move forward.
So we're going to continue to look at the problem that we have now, and if we can come up with a resolution, if, before the end of the school year, we will make that resolute, we will modify what we have immediately to try to bring relief, but I don't have a resolution right now. And I did, I went out, had a very candid conversation with Jay on the, here, and then I happened to sit next to Jay in one of the workshops at- And then I happened to sit next to Jay in one of the workshops at MASS. And he goes, nice to see you, not on a, on a big screen. And I said, is there any flexibility around there? He said, no. He goes, you have to certify. If you certify it, that, you know, you're on the hook for it. So we're, we're coming in line with the law again. And now as, as we take it upon ourselves to look at the problem and find a solution that is, is good for our kids, there might be something I bring back to you and say, we need to add a couple additional buses that aren't necessarily reimbursed. I don't know that yet. So that's, that's the piece here. And, and, and we're in a fiscal budget right now, so to add that, I, I just, I'm not there yet.
Hang on, Glenn, a minute.
Is there a law on maximum amount of time you can keep a kid on a bus?
This is, no, there isn't.
Cause he comes off with headaches or asleep.
Right.
Time to get up.
So, so I, I, I think, I think no, I think there's good practice. And again, I think Karen's good practice was 25 minutes. And that's not there.
Yeah.
And, and, and again, if you look at some of the regions out in the western part of the state, some of the kids are on a bus, not with, you know, 60, maybe seven, and that's, that's another issue, but they might be on for an hour and 15 minutes depending on where we are. And which will lead us to a further conversation about start times and things like that. And maybe those are some of the flexibility that I might have if we, if we move to some transitions in, in when and when we start school, when we dismiss school, which is another part of this piece. So long-term, short-term, we, I, we know we have a problem. So we're putting them, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, before you move on, I just had a clarifying question. So if we, if you, if one of the solutions was we need to add three buses to, but they won't be reimbursed, who would pay for that? Would that be a Hanson Town meeting? If it's, if it's in Hanson?
Could be.
Right? If those buses are there, would that be where that would go?
I don't, I don't know. I didn't think through that.
Yep.
Um, it could be. It could be a piece at Hanson Town Meeting. It could be the school committee trying to take it out of our operational budget.
Yep. Right. All that stuff we had talked about.
No.
Yeah, I just, I, I appreciate, this is really good and I think it's great that this is out there. But I think it's, you're going to have more like parents who are going to, you know, when you look, we talk, we look at class sizes and we compare class sizes from Conley and Duval and Indian Head. And to me, this is the exact same as comparing a class size. The amount of time a kid is on a bus is, I mean, no wonder behavior was out of control. Kids are on a bus for 45 minutes. Like, I, I don't, you know, and, and I understand that there's not a short-term solution and that we're working through it, but there's got to be a solution. And if any of us aren't looking at this and shaking our heads and scratching our heads, like, we gotta, we gotta figure this out soon. So.
So I'm just trying to understand all this, seeing it for the first time. And just looking at the capacity of the buses, right? So they're all, the least is 71 capacity. So I'm just looking back at what the buses were for Indian Head and just recognizing, you know, the towns entered into a regional district for the benefit, and really the one benefit is reimbursement of transportation. So the 75%, and I appreciate that, Jeff, it, it needs to be followed. So just looking at what the loads were, truthfully, they were, the, four of the buses at Indian Head, and just to recognize the numbers, were below 30. They were 29, 28, 27, 26 out of 71 on a seat. And I recognize Karen was doing that to keep the time down because in order to simply put 26 kids on to cover the area and get it, that done within 25 minutes, but that was only 40%. So 29 seats out of 71 is, is 40%. So I see why we had to change it. So I would ask if a solution is, keeping in mind, we are a regional school district. And there are perhaps families that live in Hanson that actually could ride a bus closer and get to school sooner if they went to Duval on 58. If you're on Holly Ridge, if you're on Birch Park, if you're on 58, you're closer to Duval. So we're a region. So I really never fully understood, we're a region, but our schools are still segregated by a zip code, downtown lines. So if that's a solution where it's called redistricting, there are many towns that have municipal, single towns that have two or three elementary schools, they often have to shift that line. They move it. I was a child in elementary school and we got redistrict. You know, the kids down the street suddenly went to the other school. Just opening a conversation to alleviate the busing.
That's a much, I, I understand what you're saying and I agree, but I think that that's a much bigger, and I didn't grow up in Hanson or Whitman, so.
Neither did I.
Right. And so I think that that's a really, I think that there are people watching and listening who are probably like, oh my gosh, right? So the first thing I go to is youth sports, right? Like I have a ton of kids who play on my teams, who live in those neighborhoods, who go to school with my friend, my kids and do those things. And the thought of mixing that, cause it's not a one town, right? That the Hanson and Whitman for football, for cheer, for, I mean, we just emerged for a couple of things. That's a bigger conversation. I think my concern right now is that these kids are on a bus for far too long. And I would like to look at short-term and if that means we have to look at the cost of, you know, we always say, this is what it costs to educate a kid, right? And part of educating a child is getting them safely to and from school and safety is their socio-emotional wellbeing and health. And I understand what you're saying completely, but I think we need a quicker solution to the timeframe here. And it's unfortunate that the state has pigeonholed us in this scenario because we really are bound by them, but I, I, this is very shocking to me to see.
So, did you cover kind of your long-term?
Not yet.
Okay. Let's try and do it.
Not yet. So, um, the other piece too is, is this guideline that was written, I don't know when. It's in your packet as well. We are going through this bit by bit because this, if you read through it, doesn't specify mileage as far as the 0.75 for elementary. There's, there's wording like most elementary students won't or will. So we are going to, as a sub, you know, small working group, revise this to what our needs are today. And some of these might be difficult conversations as we go, cause some of the stuff we came up with was, you know, right now, the current guideline for reimbursement is 1.5 miles plus is reimbursable in the state.
What actually gets reimbursed?
So that's what I'm going to grab right now. So everything over 1.5 miles in Whitman-Hanson, if you're on a bus, is reimbursable and we changed the methodology.
100%?
I wish. We're at 96.
96?
96. We used to be at 64.
That's what you're saying.
So 96 was good this year. And we also moved from a per pupil reimbursable to a mileage reimbursable, which we, we're getting more from the state. Anything under 1.5 miles in middle school and high school is considered you're walking or getting a ride. The towns aren't providing that non-mandated piece. And the other part of the guideline that we've had, unbeknownst to folks in Whitman because it's not really written anywhere, is 0.75 to 1.5 miles, if you're an elementary student, you are called non-mandated in Whitman. Okay? In Hanson, it's a little different because we don't have sidewalks in Hanson. So a lot of our students, most, everyone in Hanson gets a bus ride because as I drove by, rode around to see if there were actual sidewalks, there are sidewalks on one side of the road and on our guidelines, it says, students can't cross rooted roads. So historically.
Sorry. Unless there's a crossing guard.
And Hanson hasn't provided those crossing guards. So, so again, guidelines here, Whitman provides crossing guards, Hanson doesn't. So Hanson made the decision to pay for the bus rather than pay for the crossing guard. And I think this is where we're breaking this down to saying, we need to have consistency to make sure that there's equitable, an equal-like experience for all of our students. So one of the conversations we brought up and said, well, if it's 0.75, where did that number come from? And nobody can give me an answer. So one of the conversations that we will come up with and bring to the committee is, can we modify that from 0.75 to zero? And will the towns reimburse? Not saying they are, who's watching right now, I'm not making that comment, but will it be reimbursable if the towns agree to 0.7? Every elementary student under 1.5 can get a ride, no matter where they live. That's a piece of this, of, of this long-term. Can all kids get a ride under 1.5 miles? Because we also have areas in the town of Whitman, by Whitman Middle School, that were marked areas of, of, of getting a ride because of the proximity of the roads, the lack of the crossing guards. And we also have to take into account special circumstances around sexual predators, X, Y, and Z. So we are going to work as a long-term, and when I say long-term, by probably our January school committee, because this might have financial implications on how we build the towns for those non-mandated, mandated pieces. So I will bring back what we have found, our revised guidelines, so that the school committee can approve those and we can move forward. With a clear understanding moving into, into the summer of, or town meeting, who's voting on what? What line item is that non-mandated in both communities? And who's our eligible ridership? Again, when we drag through some of this language, it's outdated and it doesn't fit 2022, 2023 Whitman-Hanson Regional District as far as transportation. So we are looking at that, presenting to the committee. And part of that is going to be conversations with either both town administrators and their feel of how and what this might cost. Rough numbers, I looked at under 75, 0.75 for Conley and Duval. You're looking at 28 kids in Duval and probably 35 at Conley and maybe it's flip-flopped. You're not talking 100 and something kids that are under that 0.75 miles piece as, as deemed as walkers and not non-mandated kids at both of those schools. And again, in Hanson, it's, it's been traditionally, every student who is outside of that area is getting a ride to their schools and it's really because of, of the lack of sidewalks or lack of crossing guards in Hanson. So those are the long-term, when I say long-term, I mean, by, by January, February, by budget time, by our, our, um, public hearing on budget, we should have some good, solid information for you with approval or not approval of our thoughts in the transportation guidelines.
Thanks. I have one more follow-up. It's the decision of this committee, I think it comes down to what we provide to our students and providing, as you said, the same level of service. So I'm, the way we used to do it by sending the non-mandated to the towns is, is what I believe technically not the way it's supposed to be done. And I think that's our decision to include it in the budget essentially. What students do we want to provide transportation for? And maybe the solution, not redistricting, so I hope that's not a headline. Maybe the solution is we come up with a policy that there's a maximum time spent on the bus, right? We all agree that no student shall ride the bus for more than X minutes. And if that means certain areas of our district have more mileage to cover, there may end up being less students on the bus in order for that ride to not be that. I don't know. But I, the decision does land with us on who we want to transport and, and how we're going to pay for it. And I, I mean essentially, you know, how, I mean, what in our budget, what we're going to provide. But my last is a question on crossing guards. So Whitman has crossing guards. Do you have information on how that decision's made? Who, that's not a line in our budget to pay for crossing guards.
It's a line item in the town.
So that's another thing. Are we as a school district providing crossing guards and at what schools do we provide them? You know, how do we know? What if Hanson, I mean, what if Whitman didn't approve that line item of crossing guards? Now we're in a pickle.
And this is why I think part of this revision of these guidelines, to give direction to the towns based upon the district is very important. Because there are not. The, the one thing that I was able to do, and I call Frank, we were able to put a, a crosswalk on Franklin Street because we had some issues of students not being able to cross the street. And Franklin Street can be a pretty busy street and they ended up doing it that afternoon. So they're able to, we have good communication, I think, but we need to come forth with a protocol and guidelines that we can, that can give direction to the town and then answer that question. Cause to me, again, when we got here and you're looking at, at town meeting in Whitman, there's a line item for crossing guards. And they're not hired by the school.
I got Michelle, hold on, hold on. I got Michelle first.
I just want to add in what Don was saying about maybe there's a policy about time on the bus. I've gotten some feedback that I'll just share, that parents were so excited for full-day kindergarten for their five-year-old, but now they're on the bus for an hour. And it's almost like, I wish that they were in half-day because.
It's a baby. It's a baby on the bus.
It's too much. It's the full-day kid. They were so excited about it. And now here they are, their kid is coming home, an hour, five-year-old after being on the bus for 50 minutes. So we have to think about these young kids, especially we're offering full-day kindergarten, everyone's so thrilled, we're jumping at that chance to put our students in, and then an hour each way is, is just, it's just too much. It has to be figured out. And it has to be figured out.
Yeah, I was going to, you know, hop on it, Don, too. You have to remember, Don, that before there was, with the police in charge of the crossing guards, we were. We, the school district hired the crossing guards and paid and got reimbursed from the town for the crossing guards. Now it ends up that the police are in, they're under the police jurisdiction now, the crossing guards. And that's why it's a separate line item too.
And it might be, if I can just, this is an opportunity maybe for the regional agreement committee to talk about that.
Cause yeah, I would respectfully disagree with Don that it is in our unilateral decision because the regional agreement does specifically talk about transportation. So I don't think the school committee can supersede what's in the regional agreement. Now, having said that, we also need to look at the regional agreement. So I think taking a giant step back from this entire conversation, like I think we're in a mess because we have a bunch of stuff that we've been kicking around for a while that we really need to reevaluate. So I think Jeff hit on a bunch of it, right? Like wonderful that we had routes from 1996 that said like, well, guess what? The traffic flow has probably changed since 1996, right? There's a lot of different things and, you know, we, so like I jotted down some things as I was listening to all of us and Jeff, and we got to do what's best for kids, which he didn't expressly say, but I know, right? That's, he's got it everywhere, right? We got to think about equity and what's fair to everyone across the district. We have to think about safety, right? We have to think about the financial impact. And, and when I say equity, not only consistent with the towns, but we also have to think of, we just went through the free and reduced numbers, right? So like, not sure we can, you know, I'm not sure it makes sense to say, hey, we're going to charge you for a bus. Like, you know, that, we, we had you to provide your bills, but we're going to charge you for, like, so there's all, it is a really complicated.
We can't charge for buses.
Right. And, and well, for the non-reversables, we could. And that's, so that's something to consider. We had a conversation on that, but then it, now that goes into a bunch of different, you know, pieces. So I think, you know, I like where Jeff is going of, we need to rip this entire thing apart. It's, some of this has been not good for 20-plus years. So it might take more than 20 minutes or 20 days. You know, I think if we can get something by February that feels right in all of those areas and to some people's point, maybe we have to look at the financial piece. I think we all hit on it. It's 75% reimbursable. It doesn't mean we can't do it, just means it's not reimbursed. Does that make sense? Does it not make sense? So I think those are a lot of really big pieces, and we got to get through it. In the short term, though, one of the things I'm curious about, just again, I'll follow the will of the committee, do we know what it would cost to bring the district to a flat 25 minutes? So that would specifically impact Indian Head and Hanson. If I'm looking at it right, those are the two schools. Could we figure out between now and the next meeting, what is the cost? And then, I'm sure there's another fun-filled conversation of what would we do with that cost and who does it belong to? But at least can we, I'm listening to her and I'm listening to her and everyone else, and there's definitely a, can we at least ask the question of, so what would it, because it's just a financial, that's a financial cost, right?
Yep.
So for the rest of the year, what would it cost us to say, I'm going to bring them down to 25 minutes? We can then have a conversation of...
Really, really, it would be like, what would it cost for to add the four buses back? The three buses back?
Is that, right, is that what we need, right? So I don't know. Is it three buses specifically?
It would be pretty close, because if you're looking at last year's numbers.
Do we know what a bus costs a year?
Off the top of my head, I don't want to misquote now, so.
So just, I understand what everyone's saying, but I'm thinking about as a regional school district, if you're now looking to add buses, you're going to drop below, you run the possibility of dropping below 75%. So...
It's almost guaranteed.
So we don't know what's happening.
So there's no way to do it?
We don't know what's happened in the past because this is the first, the largest deep dive we've ever had. So we...
So if we added three, so is there a way for us to add three non-reimbursable buses?
That would take kids off the bus to make those numbers, right?
What's that?
I said, if we, if we took kids off those buses, our numbers would go below 75%.
That would be the exercise that we did with the number of buses that we had after this first deep dive. Because we're not sure what's taken place in the past, but this is the first time we've done a deep dive like this. So I'm sure we've always been doing what we've supposed to be done, but when we did a best practice deep dive, this is what we found.
Sorry, and thanks, George. So the immovable object is the law of the 75%. That is the immovable object.
Yes.
So we need to move it or petition?
Or not.
Maybe change the law.
Be eligible for reimbursement.
For all of it, not just, not just for the bus?
Yes.
I think the solution lies in this new company. They have the software, they can reroute these buses, they can do a lot of things, right?
I would think so.
I would hope so. And if we tell them that's our goal...
Because you have an optimize, I mean, there is, it's fascinating, there's an optimize button. So you can do what you want, and then you hit this button that says optimize, and it just goes right back to cleaner, easier piece. So I think we can definitely become more granular, we can definitely make sure that we're doing the right thing. I just, I know what everyone's saying, I'm just sitting here saying...
There's no way to fix it.
We have a 75% piece that we need to...
And that's, so we're going to keep looking?
Let them speed.
Yep, that's, we're going to keep...
Just drive faster.
Sorry.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to just come in late and not say anything, or even try to drag this out more. But just as an understanding, it's from the time that, timing-wise, from the time the child or student gets on the bus at school and then gets dropped off at home, vice versa, obviously, but not really at home, whatever the bus stop is. So like, I saw a piece that said, we'll not go down cul-de-sacs. Well, there could be a very long cul-de-sac, and now the kid's walking 15, 20 minutes. Maybe not that long.
It did say that they would, no matter what, you're no more than a quarter mile from your house.
Okay, okay. Maybe I didn't get everything, but thank you for that. So it just seems like if you, if the elapsed time is, you know, I don't know, from the school doors, on the bus, bus leaves, the child gets off, student, but just even walks like 10 minutes, is that 10 minutes included? And it's not, it's not, but it could be overall in the child's mind. No, I just spent 15 minutes or, and I'm not putting it out like, you know, I'm putting anything against anyone. It's just trying to figure out that a little bit, but more of a comment, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Clark.
So, I'm just going to move on. We can keep transportation, but moving on, we have another issue. As we did our deep dive in transportation, the issue came up around Hanson Middle School and the fact that they spend more time in school as a six-and-a-half-hour day, meaning Hanson Middle School, our fifth grade versus our elementary. So I met with the elementary principals and Bill Tranter and George, and we went through their schedule. So the next item in your packet is the actual schedule of elementary and Hanson Middle School. So if you look at our elementary students at Conley, they spend 360 minutes a day in school. Variety of academics, lunch, recess, power block, dismissal. They have 55 minutes of not, total non-instructional time, which includes lunch, recess, passing for specials, power block, and dismissal. Yes.
Why aren't you counting power block as instructional time?
It's passing time to power block.
Gotcha.
Power block is counted. 305 minutes total instructional time, including classroom, power block, related and specials at Conley. You will see that Duval Elementary is at 365 because of transportation and because of a second floor of getting their students together for dismissal time. Their dismissal time is actually, they give them a 10-minute window. Same thing, morning meeting, power block, academics, lunch, recess, 60 minutes of non-instructional time, which is five minutes more than Conley, 305 minutes of total instructional time. Indian Head is again 365, just because of the dynamic of their building. 365 minutes total time, 60 minutes of non-instructional time, 305 minutes of total instructional time at Indian Head. The last page is Hanson Middle School. They run a middle school schedule with their morning routines, their academics. They have more recess time built into their schedule than the elementary schools. They have 315 minutes total instructional time, including classroom, power block-related specials. They have 75 minutes of non-instructional time, which is due to three minutes of passing in between most of their classes, recess, lunch, passing, related to power block and dismissal. They are in school for 1,800 minutes more instructional time or 30 hours. So Hanson, the fifth graders at Hanson Middle School are in school 30 more hours than our three other, or our two other fifth-grade classes. So that's what it is. It's not a half hour. When I first saw this, I said, oh my God, they're in school a half hour longer than the others. We have to look at this. It's 30 hours. I'm not saying 30 hours is outstanding for our students to be there longer, but they are in school for, there's more passing, non-instructional time for our fifth graders. So the solution, not necessarily now unless I'm directed at the school committee to make changes for as soon as we can, but if, if those changes come in, they have to affect all three elementaries with extending the day to cover those instructional hours or 10 minutes, which would impact our special education transportation because our vans are on a cycle and we contract those vans out. I don't know if first student can make those changes, I haven't asked that question. If that's the will of this committee at a later time, I will investigate that piece of it. However, looking forward to next year, which is the next piece of document that I have, I've been asked to look at start times, and our thought as a leadership team is that we, no matter what next year, before opening of school, all our schools have a six-and-a-half-hour day or a six-hour and 35-minute day. And on this last piece of paper, our teacher, and let me just frame this, our teachers are already contracted seven hours a day. Will it impact the bargaining unit? Yes, we're going to have to have a conversation about how we structure the time. But a six-and-a-half-hour day at our elementaries will give them more flexibility in instruction or related or recess time that we've talked, that students should have when we start school next year. Scenario one is very expensive, and I know this isn't necessarily what folks out there want to see. It is keeping our middle school start time at 7:40, ending at 2:10, six-hour and 32, six-hour and 30-minute day. It's a 25-minute transition between the middle and the high school if we start at 8:05. 8:05 to 2:35, six-hour and 30-minute day. 35-minute transition to our elementaries, which one of the goals was to align our three elementaries together, to start them at 8:40 and have them end at 3:10, which is 6:30. To the right of that, you're looking at a total transportation cost of 2.563, 545, which is currently, we spent 1.750, I believe, this year in transportation or last year's transportation.
So hold on, clarifying. So you're saying that it's going from 1.7 to 2.5, or it's 2.5 additional?
It would be, no, going from 1.7 to 2.5. No, this is not additional.
I read it like, I read it like...
This is total cost. However, however, again, the cost thing, the issue is, and Karen, our transportation coordinator said, I'd be very worried, Jeff, because we have to add 13 buses and there are no drivers now, so I don't even know if first student could handle that, that request. And our contract is, we can only add or subtract 25%. Now, we could renegotiate. If this is the will of the committee, we can have that conversation. But that's the cost. We're almost, I don't want to say doubling, but we're pretty close to adding $800,000 in that, that piece. The second scenario is middle school starting at 7:20, ending at 1:55, 6:35 in the course of the day, 40 minutes in between, which is the ideal for our buses to get to and from. The high school at 8 o'clock, 2:35 end, 6:35 minute day. Elementary's at 8:40 and 3:15, 6:35. The total cost was adding three buses, moving that 1.750 to 1.908, 651. Now, again, nothing set in stone, but this is a, will be a one-time cost upfront because if we're getting 96% reimbursable, the next year I'm getting 96% of that increase back, okay? Scenario three is moving the high school to a 7:20 start, 1:55 or 6:30 to 1:55. Same thing, middle school, 8 to 2:35, 6:35. Elementary's 8:40 to 3:15, 6:35. The scenario two, three, and four are all adding three buses because we're aligning the three elementaries together, one of the goals, and extending their day. And then scenario four is keeping the high school at 7:05 to 1:40, middle 7:45 to 2:20, and elementary 8:25 to 3:00.
Scenario four is current, is that what we're at?
The scenario, we, no, the scenario, the current scenario is our high school starts at 7:05, our middles are 7:30, right? And then all three elementaries are at different times. So this is adding the three buses to keep these, those elementaries together, and then we have some flexibility around the start times. But the goal, again, is adding that extra half an hour to our three elementaries to, one, even them out with our current fifth-grade piece, and then I think giving those students oppor, or teachers and principals opportunity to use that extra half an hour in their day for whatever they so choose. And I think we can also restructure the Hanson Middle piece, the fifth grade, a little bit better. One of the pieces, and Bill was pretty outspoken today and in the past couple of weeks about when the, when the committee made this decision to move the McQuan School to Indian Head and Indian Head students to Hanson Middle, parents and teachers wanted a similar or a, an elementary experience. So they made some accommodations for recess because middle school doesn't have recess. They did some different things, and he's modified their schedule to work that out with the teachers. The kids still stay in class, but the bell rings, so the, and they have lockers. In our other elementaries, the kids have cubbies, everything's in their room. So they don't really transition out except for the areas that I explained. So this is a piece, I just wanted you to see it. I think this is a talking point as we move forward as part of the goal that I had while adjusting start times. The eight o'clock start time for the high school is a financial cost if we keep this. The challenge isn't necessarily the beginning of the day, it's the ride home at the end of the day. And aligning the buildings up to six-and-a-half hours helps, but there's still that, that extra cost to add buses to get kids to where they need to be to start school and then get them home at an appropriate time. And again, when we look at timing, I don't want our elementary kids coming home at 4 o'clock either. I think that's the issue Duval has right now even, is the later they go, they dismiss at 3:20, a kid might not be getting home, you know, for 25 minutes or whatever, and now we know it's dark. So there's some other issues here that we want to work through, but I see the transportation piece, this elementary issue at fifth grade at Hanson, and then moving forward with some solutions as Carter, a three-pronged piece that we're going to be working on over the next two months.
So that was a lot.
I know it was.
Which is good, and I appreciate it.
I would want you guys to see what we...
So what I would suggest to the committee is, because I think there's, I'm kind of like crunching numbers and looking at some of this, so if anyone has any immediate comments, great, but otherwise, we can certainly put this on the agenda after everyone's had a little bit more conflict. So I don't want to shortchange it, but at the same time, like, I don't want to, I want some more time to look at this.
And the reason I didn't drop it in the packet is because I wanted to explain it.
Explain, no, 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 I have no problem.
And that's, that's the piece. I thought if you've got all this information without understanding where I want to go or where we want to go with this, I'd rather have you sit on it, look at it, have me explain it. You guys come up with questions, you folks come up with questions, talk to folks for the next meeting. This is an ongoing conversation because, one, it's adjusting times. I'm not super comfortable adjusting times on parents who have schedules right now. So that's one of my issues as an immediate fix. However, moving forward, I also want to solicit my, our community around what they were looking at for start times, and that was part of our working group on start times was soliciting the community. Then the issue around Hanson Middle came up, so I want to incorporate that into something after Thanksgiving. And again, adjusting to, you're, after Thanksgiving, you're going to be getting a couple of surveys from the district, and I hate the word survey, but I need some information from parents. I need it on, on school start times, and I also need it on parent conferences. So we are going, we went through parent conferences this week. I know Whitman Middle is right now, and we're all virtual. I want feedback from parents who say how that worked, and then how we modify that for next year if need be. The limitation that I have right now, the only limitation I have at these conferences is teachers' contract, the contract right now is for three, for three nights. So we have to work around that if we modify how conferences are. And I know in elementary and middle right now, we do conferences a half-day, a night, and then a consecutive night. How we modify that, I still have to find within the framework of the, of the teacher's contract. But I do want parent input. I know there was a Facebook survey on conferences, so I want to solicit that input. But on the flip side, double-edged is, I know people don't want multiple surveys, so we're going to condense that piece into also, as we look to adjust start times for the 23-24 school year, what, what are you looking at? And again, I haven't formed those questions, they'll be more succinct. And then I want to look at our student body and get some information from our students at where they are. Because I can ask a different kid every day, and they're giving me a different answer. It just depends on, on if they're tired or cranky or if they're wide awake. So it just depends. But to give you folks information on making decisions, I feel like I have to get some more information before. But these were two hot-button issues that were talked about the month of October, and I wanted to get them out in the open so that folks could, could have some knowledge. This was brought up at the building committee last night. You know, Hanson kids get more time. So I just wanted to clarify, this is what actually is happening. Yes, they do. It's 30 hours, it's plus 30. Do we need to rectify it now or if we are comfortable moving it into next year? This started in 17, 18, when, when the fifth graders went to Hanson Middle School. So again, food for thought for the committee, and then we can talk about it next month.
So just clarifying, you're thinking you'll have feedback on those surveys to parents, students on start times and parent-teacher conferences for the next, for the December meeting?
I should have some because I would only give it a short window of, of time.
Okay, open up the committee. Don?
Yes.
So I won't talk about the numbers or the start time, but the, the topic about the difference in the time is, is really concerning. And I think, like the time on the bus and the long time, if, if all of us aren't outraged over what's happened here, then I ask why. So I'm looking right online at our policy, you know, equal educational opportunity. It's policy JB, so, and that's not happening right now. So students in our district in the same grade are not getting the same equal opportunity. I would disagree. You've outlined that it's 30 hours of time on learning, but it is a half-hour day for 180 days, so it's 90 hours of access to school, to teachers, to professionals, even if it's a brain break of a recess. So it's time in a building, and it's opportunity in that experience of the middle school and, and access to those, those after-school programs that other kids are not getting. So it's, when I, when I brought this up, Chair Howard asked me, what would your solution be? And immediately, I, not once did I think, take that away. I said, give it to all, give it to all, which is what you're, you're presenting, so I appreciate that. Unfortunately, it's, it's lost on the last four years. It's lost on, if you have a freshman in high school right now, or in eighth grade or seventh grade, sixth grade, they got this advantage. So, so it's, it's, you know, I kind of asked, how, how did the committee allow this to get voted and happen at that time when Dr. Whitner was here? And how does this continue to sort of get reported? And even Desi, I say, you know, you ask, end-of-year reports, you ask us to say that, and nobody seems to notice that this has happened. So I just felt it was important to make sure it's, it's, you know, and it's continuing so until we, we resolve it. But it, it goes against what our policy is to provide the same educational opportunity to everyone across the district. You know, we're concerned about busing in, in times like that. This is, this is education. So you've now got kids who have gone through and had a different experience.
Other thoughts? I mean, so, because again, I think it's, where do we go, right? So I think as a committee, we consistently come across things that are frustrating and things that haven't happened, and I understand, and some of those are we've caused collectively or how are we done it? Or they've been caused by past generations or all the above? But it kind of leaves us with, so what do we want to do, right? Because we need to do something. And I think, you know, there's a solution that says, hey, you know, change, change the day immediately. My personal experience, and I'm going to be consistent with the same thing I was saying with the busing, is sometimes when we make a quick decision, then it has other unintended consequences. So that's the part, like, I don't know, I don't know if it's as simple as, hey, we'll I don't know if it's as simple as, hey, we'll just extend the day. I don't know what the ripple effect of a parent that's made whatever choices. I'm sure they would like to go back and make a different choice so that they can have more time on learning, but I don't want to just whipsaw into one decision that then creates other problems. So that's, that's where I get stuck and that's, that's kind of the essence of where do we go?
Follow-up I just, that I've thought about over the last few weeks too. There are families at Duval and Conley who are at a six-hour day and they may just need that half hour before they get home from work, right? That's childcare. That's childcare that now some families, that their child is in a different school in Hanson for a different time. So it's negatively impacted. So you say, you know, they may, they may welcome that extra half hour and not need childcare.
And one of the things too, it wouldn't be necessarily just to drop on, on the end. It would be a drop in the beginning potentially too.
Yeah.
Because it's, I, right now, my, the, the staff is there a half hour before school and half hour after. I just can't extend it a half an hour at the end of the day.
Yeah.
So those are the issues that again, we're trying to work through, seeing. And again, I'm open to whatever, but my limitations potentially could be the busing of that because they're contracted bussings and I don't know their, their schedule. And special education, I have vans that might not be able to get students there because of where they drop now, they go somewhere else to another town or wherever. So these are things that we, I can look into as we go and what that effect would be. And then what I would be hesitant to do, and I totally understand, Don, because we had this conversation, is I don't know if, if that effect is going to trickle to other, because this is, this would have to be every elementary right now. It wouldn't just be grade five. It'd have to be across the board for transportation and for pickup. So I don't know how that would affect people that have plans. So this is something we're, we're working on and I'm frustrated that we're in the spot that we're in.
Just to kind of add on to what Don was saying, you know, when you look at the start times too, you're talking about a fifth grader being at school, starting their day at 7:40 at Hanson Middle, a fifth grader at Duval, starting their day at 9:15.
I know.
Right? And I think about my fourth grader, right, who like doesn't have to be at school till, I don't know what time does Indian head start, 9:05, right? That also is a huge piece, but we are so bound because of the choices and whatever happens to get that fifth grade class at Hanson Middle. Because they're a fifth grade class and we're trying to give them things that fifth graders get in a K through five, and they are not in a K through five, right? And I don't have a solution. I don't know how you fix that because we've got to keep it consistent with all the fifth graders because essentially they're going to go to sixth grade and hopefully get the same middle school experience. But, you know, and I, I appreciate the, the understanding of the ripple effect, you know, because I look at the elementary school, you know, if, if the elementary schools end their day at 3:15 and assuming that the buses would stay the same because we would still be the reimbursement and these bus routes would be similar, kids wouldn't be getting home till four o'clock, right? And so now like there are a lot, this is such a huge piece to understanding and educating all the kids. And I don't know that we're going to be able to. I think the 30 hours, so that's, as soon as I saw this, I wrote that, like that's really concerning, like, and I know everyone's concerned, but that's really concerning. But, you know, just getting, I, I don't know how, I don't know how you fix other than, you know, when the new Whitman Middle comes, you put the fifth grade there and then we don't have to worry about it anymore, right?
Oh.
No, I know, I know.
I joke.
I, I have nothing to do with that, but you know what I mean, Mike? I mean, that's, that's obviously.
Even if it does, it's far.
Right? But that's the huge problem. Like we've got kids who are elementary aged kids in a middle school.
Why? Why did that happen?
Well, I don't.
Space.
Okay.
Hanson one dollar.
In the space.
But I don't think.
It happened at Indian Head.
But was it a school committee decision or was it more town?
The school committee.
I think it was joined.
Yeah.
We lost the school.
Right.
Again, I don't know if it was the ideal situation. It was, we have a school.
And I just, I don't know if it's, so then maybe, yeah, I just, like I look at that 9:15 to 7:40, that's the other piece. And you're still going to have that with any of these scenarios, you're still going to have, you know, scenario one, the middle school still starts at 7:40 and the elementary is an hour later. You're still going to have that inequity. So we either have to say, unfortunately, this is how it is, or, and I, that might have to be how it is. I don't know how you, because there's nothing on any of these scenarios that give the middle school and the elementary schools the same start time. There just can't be because of the busing. But, but fixing the time of day and the time on learning is something to look at.
That's the important.
Yeah.
For sure.
I'm sorry, one more clarifying question though. These scenarios assume status quo that we will include non-mandated students that are currently part of the busing program, right? Is that what that is?
They assume our numbers now, yes.
The status quo. So I guess I'm going to throw out scenario, you know, HJ, I, whatever. How many buses would we need if we did not include non-mandated kids, right? What is our situation if we just bust those where we're required to? Maybe we start there, right? What is it if we do what we have to do? And then how much more? And what are the consequences if we add on to that?
And I think that's what he's looking at, but that's like kind of my reference, like when we had a brief conversation around this and it's like, well, if we don't bust them, then what we do is the frame reduced so.
Well, they're always eligible for a bus.
Okay, well, right, so now we start, so now we start growing that population. And then what do we do with the people that live with the proximity of a sex offender? Because there's a lot of those, right? And so, and so now next thing, so it's not like this is where I think they need to spend the time looking at all these pieces and come back to sharing, like we looked at this, we looked at, hey, we looked at, we looked at not, we knocked it, doing the minimum. This is what, these are the pros and cons. We looked at doing the minimum and charging. These are the pros and cons. We looked at just doing everything and absorbing all the costs. These are, and then ultimately that's hopefully where we can all come to some consensus. There's just so many moving parts. It's just not, and it's moving parts that have been compounded by decisions that have made over decades. So it's not.
And we don't want to be a part of the next decision.
No, I think we all want to lay it all out there, right? Jeff and team are spending the time to like lay it all out there and like do something that we can feel good about and at least it makes sense.
And it's the best compromise is what it's going to be.
And we're living.
You've got to compromise something.
We're living on decisions made that were strictly financial.
Correct.
And not necessarily fought in the best interest of kids. And I believe this is where this committee is. And that, and there were those, a lot of those decisions were made years ago and then over the last decade around dollars. Because if we could just say, there's an unlimited amount of funds around this and we weren't worried about this and this and this, I could give you a schedule that would work for everybody, you know? That'd be great. I don't have any teachers in the building because you can't afford them. But I mean, we, we had buses and all, but I mean, that's the thing. We, we go back to 2012 when we made these busing decisions and we made the time decisions. 7:05, I lived it and like it or not, indifferent, it's not necessarily wasn't made for kids at all. There was nobody discussed. We were told, George and I were told, he was told when he was getting his time, I was told when I was getting my time, do it. And that was, that was made by the committee consensus because it cut 450 some odd thousand dollars and reimbursables in the past were 65%. Don gave us my, my numbers, she gave them to me on our subgroup. Reimbursables are now 96% as last, and they might fluctuate depending on the Commonwealth. But I think the legislature even understands when they say commitment of fully reimbursable, they're getting to that even with circuit breaker, even with not homeless transportation, those types of things. So we are in a better spot in 2022, 23 than we were in 2012, 2013. And we can start looking at making some solutions for the next decade of students that are in the best interest of kids. The struggle for me, and I think for George and my team, is we want to do what's best right now. And I, I just can't pull the lever because of, like Chris said, okay, I can put them on here, but I don't have this, and I have this, and I have this. And we're doing the, the scattergram where we're just connecting and we have to think this through because I think some of the decisions of the past, while valid, might not have been thought through for the next generation. When we closed McQuan, again, we were told we'd close McQuan and this is what was happening and this is who was going to staff the building. It was, there was no discussion or at least we weren't involved as a leadership team in those discussions. And then it came to the committee and the committee made the decision and endorsed those decisions. And now we're trying to unravel some of that. And there have been issues and you've known through the superintendency, year five, every year we've, we've gone through a challenge that wasn't predicated on a decision that we made, but it was predicated on decisions of the past. And we're trying to mull through another one. And what I want to go through a year of here, we can put something in the next, in the next school year, so we're not running into challenges. We can just better what we're doing now. Because this is energy that we're focusing on, on fixing rather than moving forward. And I think we've done some really good things, but this is another issue and that's why I wanted to bring it out today that people are talking about in town. I don't like the fact that kids are on a bus for an hour. I don't like the fact that there's 30 minutes here. I, I don't like the fact, you know, we have to fix it, but I want to fix it right so that it's not a short-term decision.
This is great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And we'll continue on. So Reed's Collaborative, I'm just looking for an endorsement that we can join the Reed's Collaborative. So I'm just going to join another Board of Directors for a collaborative education. If, if we join Reed's, we're entitled to offset costs. Our students can go there at a lower tuition and really all it incorporates me to sit on their Board of Directors and attend a meeting once a month. So it's a, it's a win-win for the district. I just need a school committee endorsement.
So the only thing, because Michelle shared this with me, there is a signature of the chairperson of the school committee, so we can do one of two things. You can either authorize me to sign it and not read it, or we can put it in the packet next time and you can all.
Okay.
So which would you, which is your prerogative?
I don't believe that has to be signed at this time.
But the, right, but the chairperson of the school committee has to sign it and I don't have the authority to sign it unless these folks give it to me. And so I don't have a preference.
You got it.
You can either give it to me to sign or we can put it in the packet.
Motion to give Chris.
Second.
Fill it in the sign.
Okay. All those are favored.
Nice. Great, you're authorized.
So, and then like can we actually now, so I'm authorized, but we haven't, you haven't, we haven't done anything yet. So let's talk about what we're trying to do.
So we're just going to, go ahead, Mike. You want to speak to it?
Just so basically Reed's provides a variety of services that a lot of actually the collaboratives don't in terms of for our deaf and hard of hearing services. In terms of district joining, it would give us a significant savings. We do have several students who are also placed at their day programs, but it is a 15% markdown on all services the district would access as well as those less intuitions in addition. I believe there's about 18 member districts at this point and we'll apply it to that are going to be joining moving forward at this point, hopefully. As well, you know, member districts for every collaborative tend to also get preference. They treat their members better than those who are non-members. So typically if we, you know, we need placement and a district sends who also needs placement at the same time who is not a member, we would get preference over them as well in that addition. So there are good benefits to it. Reed's also just relocated into an absolutely beautiful campus. There's right around the Middle Borough, 495 Rotary, really upgraded their facilities. It's just, they're really doing well by their students and creating a better program.
How long have they been in existence?
A while.
A while, okay.
Reed's been on for a while.
Great.
Students have whispered water from Reed's.
Okay. So we'd be looking for a motion to join the collaborative.
Motion to join Reed's Collaborative.
Any discussion?
Just quickly, and I think this is great, reading through what Mike provided us and everything. I was a little nervous about the 18 and not possibly 20. I can't imagine 20 of you all sitting at a table, whomever, and Jeff, please don't run for the president or vice president because they'll probably give you extra work. But I, I give my full endorsement. It's really something.
Any other discussion? All those are favored? You know, that's great.
Thanks. Budget planning. So I met, I think I reported out that I met with Whitman Selectmen, I met with Hanson Selectmen last night, and they affirmed what Whitman had wanted. And it's great because we want to do collaboration this year. So I will roll out a tentative budget on 12/21 to this committee. It won't have super bells and whistles, but it'll be a, an outline of where we're going to be with some rough numbers. One thing the committee has to consider is with a new governor this year, the governor's budget won't come out until March. We usually have the numbers in February. John can do a rough estimate on, on what those numbers are from the governor's budget, but it won't be out. And we had this conversation at MAS that some budgets are due for regional districts March 2nd because they're town meetings. Ours is due to be voted on by you usually around March 17th. So we're going to have to base, go, make some assumptions on John's numbers and then when the governor's budget comes up, we'll have a more solid idea. So I'll give you a rough sketch on 12/21. I tentatively scheduled a school committee, joint school committee, selectmen and FinCon meeting with both communities on 1/12, Thursday, the 12th. We have a school committee meeting on the 11th and the selectmen at least in Hanson have one on the 10th. I kept Monday out of it because Monday seemed to be tough for folks sometimes. So it's going to be on Thursday, the 12th. We'll give more information and have a dialogue with both communities of where they are. I did ask Hanson also if at that time they could share some of their information that they have with me. It would be great as we move into the process. And then February 1st will be our public hearing on the budget and really start digging in. But before that, you will have at least a month and the boards will have at least a couple of weeks to digest. The goal of the budget subcommittee is between December and February to kind of outline some of the areas and help me along with John prepare a budget for that public hearing. So we wanted the committee, the goal of the subcommittee is to have the committee, the school committee hear everything so it's transparent and then go back as a subcommittee meet, refine a few things and, and go forward. So I'm, I'm optimistic that both towns and both boards said that they'd like to sit down together and hear one presentation because it saves me six meetings. But, you know, it was, we can all get it out too and have that out and maybe we can ask some questions too of the towns of where they're at. Because last year was challenging. Last year was challenging to not know some, some, some of the figures that were in both communities. And what I don't want to present to you as a superintendent and to both towns is something that they can't even come close to paying for. But I need some of their ideas too of what they have so I can build a better budget because both towns want ours. So we can work together to provide the best opportunities for our kids. So that's what I have for the planning process. Questions at all? Awesome.
Just as a comment, I think it's great that we have a nice established timeline so we can evolve it next year based upon feedback, but at least everyone should, I think that was the feedback we all had last year was, you know, nobody was sure and someone wanted this. And so the fact that we all have a plan, great. We can always change plans, at least we have plans.
And I also told both boards that, you know, if they have specifics, then I can come to a meeting once we get into the process. Financials, John?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is the end of the year budget transfers that we do. Normally they're usually done in August or September. I'm a little bit late this year with some issues that we're having with getting our data back. So the, thank you for being patient on these. I tried to number the documents again to try to walk you through them one by one. Document that's number, number one is our, our, it's our policy. I guess it's, it's in the policy handbook for what to do with transfers. I tried to highlight that part right where it says all requests for transfers between the major accounts. And those are, again, these are function codes set up by Desi. And our policy says that anything between the major accounts, which are the numbers And those are, again, these are function codes set up by DESI. And our policy says that anything between the major accounts, which are the numbers that end in 00, have to be submitted to the school committee for approval. Transfers between line items within those accounts just have to be reported by me at my quarterly report. So that's policy DBJ. That's number one. Policy, oh, sorry, document number two is a, something from DESI about the regional district, regional school district budget process. And on page five, on the last page, it says line item transfers. Transfers from one budget line item to another shall require and be effective upon approval of the regional school committee by majority vote. Unless otherwise specified in the regional agreement, authority for such transfers may not be delegated. So I think our policy says that it's delegated to me to do the within functions, is what, that's what I'm calling them. But then this says that that can't be delegated. So I'm not sure which is correct. So I'm trying to cover myself, and I'm going to be presenting things, whether it's within, what I'm calling within the function, or inter-function. And there's going to, so there'll be two different types. But I would think that just to make sure that we have it right, you vote on them all if you choose. It's the way we've got everything.
And I know you and I had a, well, we collectively had a brief conversation on this. So unless anyone feels otherwise, just because I, I think we all know and love this budget requirements document, because I know we've seen it in the past for other things. So unless anyone feels otherwise, I really think we should follow that, and we maybe should ask our policy subcommittee to look at that policy and rework it so that it is in compliance with the guidance opposed to doing our own thing. So I think that's how you set it up. We're doing the line by line, and then maybe who's.
Chris is, Chris is the chair, so we'll bring it to the policy.
Yes, we should probably, he's gonna, he can watch this on tape, or the policy, who else is you?
Michelle and I.
So between the two of you, right?
And Glenn.
Between the three of you, hopefully we can bring this back, and we're going to need to rework that policy, because it doesn't, unless anyone feels.
Did he, I, I'm sorry. It's a policy? I thought he said in the regional.
No, so that first document is our internal policy.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And then the second document is the DESI guidance, which directly contradicts the policy. So we probably need to clean up the policy. But like John said, we're taking the conservative approach and following the guidance.
Yeah, if you vote them all, then it's okay, whichever way it falls. Document number three is what I call an appropriations and expenditure report. Looks like this. The two columns that are highlighted are the ones that you're going to be voting on tonight. Again, I called the ones that were within the function intra, oh, sorry, I called it intra-function on here. It should have been within function. And then inter-function between functions. So this is just a snapshot of every line item, and the functions are on the left-hand column where it says, like, for example, 110, oh, sorry, 1110, School Committee. That's a function in the DESI reporting system. So the way to read this document would be, what was carried over from last year is that called, is encumbered column. The original budget is the way the budget was voted in '22. The line item transfers within the function that I'm proposing tonight is that, again, I'm using the school committee as line, not line one. It'd be minus $4,0018370. There aren't any inter-function ones there. The final budget, if you vote these transfers, would be $10,000. The expenditures at the end of the year, pre-audit, again, this is all pre-audit. We haven't, they haven't been audited yet, would be $10,16706. There's 14924 encumbrances at the end of the year. And so the closing, the column that says closed, is the amount that it will actually go towards E and D or unreserved fund balance. So that's, this is every line of the budget broken out by function. And if you turn to page two, the closed line, the amount that's actually going to be turned back if you approve these tonight, will be $12,425.10 in the closed column. So we, there are a lot of transfers. We needed them in order to cover where we were, you know, at the end of the year. So that's, that's that document there. It might be worth it to kind of refer to it as we go on a little bit further. Document four should be, you should have the one with the gold on it. It's revised. This is just a summary of all the within functions and inter-functions, all the transfers, and the, what function they come from, you know, what the transfer amount was, what the original FY '22 budget was, and then the percentage. So again, real quickly, there are a lot of transfers, but within functions on the transfers, there are a total of $2,4409311 of transfers. The budget last year for fiscal year '22 was $56.7 million, or we'd be transferring, if you approve, 3.6%. Again, the inter-function transfers, there's 1.990 of those on a budget of $56.7 million, or 3.51% of the inter-function. And then the last grouping is just a total of the two combined. So 7% will be moving around to about $4 million on the budget. And then documents five and six are the actual line items for every single one of the within function and the interfunctions. There's quite a lot of them. Again, I think they're taking money from where it was budgeted and moving it to where we expended it. I can, there's 200 of them, I can go through them. But just again, the way to read this is the transfer amount. Transfer from amount is where there was money and is being transferred to somewhere that needed the money. So again, just look at the first group on document number five. There are 19 line items that are involved in the total administration of $1,0199, that function. The total of them, $80,62848, the transfer from and the transfer to. If you go through every page, get to the bottom, and those amounts were on the summary that we already, that we already talked about.
John, can I?
Sorry, go ahead.
May I ask, just since we're on this document, on page two?
Yes.
So Jeff, on the para-professionals, it's in the, like, middle of page two. So Duval para, it says transfer from $54,558. So that means it had surplus and it was transferred out? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And I know we have another para-professionals, like special ed. So I guess my question is around the difference between paras in the budget versus, I mean, special ed paras are for special ed rooms. So is this Duval para salary line, the $54,000 that went out? That's, or like, just regular classroom paras?
I believe, so, go ahead, John.
If I remember right, and this is going by my memory, and it's late, so, but there were some Duval paras that were charged to the ESRT2 funds. So that's where some of the money was charged, because we used, I'm looking at George now. I think it was, there were some for Duval, and I think there were some for Connolly.
Yeah, so as a result of our expenditure of the funds last year, ESRT2, we moved some of the para-professionals. We didn't move them with anything other than the first ones that we came to. So it was Connolly and Duval, and then we paid them, and we supplemented them with ESRT2.
Okay.
But going back to your original question, there was, there's always been some confusion around paras and the para roles. So what we did last spring was, with our administrative staff, is we defined all of those roles. We are finishing, hopefully, negotiations with Unit D. But what we've decided is that there are instructional para, there are kindergarten paras. So for every kindergarten class, you have a para professional. Then you have instructional paras. Instructional paras work in the inclusive setting within the regular classroom. Then we have what are called specialist paras. Specialist paras are those paras that are now in a sub-separate program, like an autism program or a one-on-one. We then also have intervention paras, which are a math and a science para professional at each building. And then we have what are library aide paras. So what we did at the end of the year was, we said, this is a little confusing for everybody. So we sat the principals down, and we now have a matrix of who's what. So now, when somebody gets a position, if John Stanbrook was going to be a para professional, and he was going to be a one-on-one, he would get a letter that says, you have been assigned to the role of para professional slash specialist, one-on-one at the Duval school. So that internally, we can track it. So then when Munis happens, we can then track a cleaner in that.
Okay.
But the goal of, the role and how many para professionals have been in the district and reasons why has been something that's like chasing a, you know, well-oiled pig. So we're trying to get a handle on that.
Yeah, because I, if I looked at the right budget document from the original FY '22, that Duval para line was only funded at $62,500. I'm sure we had more than just that. So to see $54,000 of that come out, I'm thinking, there's got to be something more there. And then the Connolly transfer has, I think, like, $250,000 coming into that. So I can see where the numbers don't, like, necessarily reflect what's happening and what we have. But, so I just wanted to look at that. Thank you. I just have, on page three, I just have one more question, because there's, sorry. So under the guidance and adjustment counselors, so there's a line with Hanson Middle Adjustment Counselor salary coming in, transfer in for $77,000? So is, is that a change in positions, or was that not funded to begin with? I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's the, excuse me, the transition room person, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so if you, if you remember, if you remember that previous to Michael Loesch, we had a person here who brought in a category of a program at Hanson Middle, and that is basically a social-emotional program that is now housed by a person who is a school adjustment counselor. So that was that position that came into that. Previously to that, it wasn't there. So they always had a regular school adjustment counselor. We brought in this program. This program is sort of a, it's not, it's a least restrictive environment for students that need it while still being at their neighborhood school. If it didn't work out there, they would then transfer that student, if needed, to the TLC program at the Whitman Middle School. So this was a stopgap measure that we brought in, and we felt it was best to have a school adjustment counselor in that role.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I can call you. I'll call you beforehand next time. That's all I have.
So that, that was document five. Document six is a one-pager for the inter-function transfers. And again, these are all, these are the ones that are going from, you know, the first one here is the, is money going from the 1,000s, which is administration, to 2,000s, which is instruction. So the total of that is 1.990 million down at the bottom, and there are eight of them altogether, but there are different lines within the transfers.
So I think this is a general comment, something we've kind of talked about in the past, right? Is, so if we have a budget of $56.7 million, and we have, you know, $4 million in transfers, it's 7%, like, that's a pretty big movement in general. I think it's also important to realize that, you know, we're looking at lines and categories. So, you know, the more detail you have, the more movie you're going to have, right? So I think that's, it's kind of a balancing act between, like, where do we kind of have that concern of like, whoa, wait a second, we've spent all this time and built a budget, and then we approve it, and then we change it? Or, you know, life happens, and, you know, sometimes things need to be flexible. So I guess I focused on kind of this first sheet that you provided. And so, you know, I don't know if this makes sense, because I know it is late, and we've been here a long time, and I get it. But at the same time, I guess what I was thinking, there's like seven of these that are kind of over $200,000. What I was, if we can do it this way, like some rapid fire of like, what is this? In general terms, and if you would prefer to just save that for the next meeting and be prepared to do that, that's also fine. Or if the committee has had enough of this, also fine. But to me, I don't, I'm trying to make sure we're meeting our responsibility of having that understanding of high level, you know, some of these big-ticket items. What, explain, explain the movement, because I think if it's rational and it makes sense, then we've kind of done what we need to do. So, does that make sense?
Sure.
So do you want to try and do some rapid fire, or save, okay? So let's see how this goes.
Yeah.
So, so when we look at the $216,000 movement in the superintendent, like, generally speaking, what is that? So if we look at this first document, right, the one with the yellow highlight?
It's number three in the drive.
Number three.
Right, and so the, number three, thank you. The first column has the intra-functions, and then the second column has the inter-functions, and it's kind of in summary format. So, like, I'm just looking at the big-ticket movements. So in the superintendent inter-function transfer, we had a movement of like $216,000. What was that?
So that was, the four teachers were put into the administration part of the ballot, of the budget in fiscal year '22. I think it was to make sure that it stood out, and it didn't get lost in the shuffle. But I can't report things.
Because it's in the wrong place.
Because it's incorrect. So we paid the, one of the things that I am confident about this is that the expenditures have been spent in the proper place, and it's going to make a better, make it easier and more refined budget going forward, where nothing's been moved where it shouldn't have been. And I'm not saying that happened in the past, because it may not have. But I'm very confident that every cost that was, that we've spent has been allocated properly. And now we can take that base and actually build on that and say, okay, now what do we need for a budget based on where the real costs are, exactly where the line should be? So that's one of them there. There was $280,000. It was for four teachers that were added last year. They were put into the administration function.
Perfect. So to me, like, that's the level of detail I'm looking for, right? So, and then the curriculum directors, is a $214,000 move.
Curriculum directors.
2110, the intra-function.
So what happened with, so that was confusion that's replaced, again, because they weren't properly labeled. Because we have curriculum directors that also share a role in the teacher line item, because they teach and they're curriculum directors. So the decision, a lot of these decisions were made with sort of, my background has to, well, do you know why this would look like this? And then John saying, well, this shouldn't look like this. So that was because we tried to say, if you're a curriculum director, you belong in the line that's labeled curriculum directors. So we tried to go through every single line item in the budget to make sure that wherever these people were, they were labeled correctly.
So would you have the same answer then for the classroom teachers, the substitute teachers, the non-clerical paras, which Dawn may have already covered? Same thing, just reclassification?
Reclassifying everyone, so that as we move forward, when we look at a line and we look at the people that are, it's amazing that John took every single person that was supposed to be in every, the proper line, and then we matched all of those people to the proper line. So there are people in this district who, for myriads of reasons, who've worked for years, were never properly labeled. So what we did was, we took everybody that we knew that we could and put them in the proper line item, so that going forward, we can have true representation of what it, what the teacher line, 2305, I believe it is, or the teacher line, it's scary that I remember that. It's, it's, we can now say, this is the amount of money, because it's based on these actual teachers. So that's what we tried to do last year.
Perfect, I'm going to keep it moving, then. That takes me through a bunch of these custodial services. There was a pretty big swing on the custodial services from the inter-function, like 243. There was 128 on the intra, and then like $243,000 on the inter-function.
Yeah, I know that the custodial services did go up, because once we came after COVID and we had them using different things, we did apply some of the funds from ESRT2 to them, because that was applicable. And then we also did have more of a summer work contingent that we sometimes have, because we were able to use those people who worked in the summer like we had never used them before. So we had, for this, this summer, we had, we usually, what we do is, we usually have college kids who like move the room, and then the SJ workers come in, clean and wash the room. We were able to then, though, hire some more, because they were able to help outside. They were able to help with some construction, and they, we were just able to do it. So that's why there was an increased cost.
And then the last one I have is the tuition to mass schools, the original budget, and then we had a $1.4 million transfer back in?
So that money, that's the circuit breaker money. It was budgeted in the general fund to be spent out of the general fund. And it was, circuit breaker money was.
So this ties back to the changes in how we are doing the application of circuit breakers? Fantastic, all right, good.
Follow-up and comment in reference to your comment about, you know, looking at a lot of transfers and what are we, are we really budgeting correctly? On this, on this sheet here, it's, I think it's a good example of, at the bottom, 9,000 total programs with other districts. So we had a budget, that's what we're paying outside, right? Students going out of district, but we're actually transferring, keeping that money in district. And I believe it was transferred to staff that we have to support students in district. So it shows that we are providing programs now to help students in district. So that's, that's part of that whole $4 million, 1.5. And rather than, we budgeted it to spend out of district. Instead, we were able to keep kids in.
Yeah, and I, you know, and again, I think I was, I appreciate the comments from both of these gentlemen, because it, it sounds like we're doing some cleanup. So if we're doing cleanup, that tells me that, you know, if we put people in the right places, then as we build the budget next year, we should start to see less of these. So, I'm good.
And just real quickly on that, on the inter-function one, on transfer number two, you can see that, to the extent that I could, I tried to use the surplus that we had in the programs with other districts, special education related. You see at the top, we took the money from district-wide spent tuition to other schools of 1.1 million. Every one of those lines is special education related. So we took the special education money that was slotted for it, and we used it in areas that we needed to cover other special ed. And again, it didn't get right to the cent, but I got as close as I could.
Okay. So then I think you need us to vote these, yes? So you need us to vote these, correct?
Not every one, but in general.
Well, we can vote them all, they're all here.
You do need to vote every one.
I was going to say, I think we do.
We'll do it all.
So why don't we, I'd be looking to get a motion to authorize or approve the line items transferred, transfers as presented.
So moved?
Second.
We've had some good discussion already. Any, any additional discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. All right, John. FY '22 update.
And then very quickly on document number eight, I'd like to start with, I know I'm going to go to document number seven, but document number eight is the revenue for the fiscal year '22 and in a comparison to '21. Again, this is pre-audit. It hasn't been run by anyone. It hasn't been given to the state yet, but this is where I think we are. And fiscal year '21's final audited amount was $54 million. And this is the general fund. And FY '22, again, pre-audit, is 57 million, 57.2 million, an increase of 2.2 million or 4.17. When, when I certify E and D, I'll be going into this more, but this is where I am as of right now. I don't think the revenue's gonna change all that much. And a lot of that, again, is reclassifying some of the things that, that I think we've talked about before. And then document number seven is the expenditures. Again, final pre-audit with your vote that you just took. It's a comparison between fiscal year '21's audited numbers and fiscal year '22's pre-audit numbers. And again, you know, broken down by function.
Okay. Any additional questions for John? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Job descriptions. Job descriptions. We have two job descriptions that we'd like you to, to approve today. One is for CNA from special education. Mike, do you want to just cover that briefly?
Yep. So part of the reason we're really bringing this job description for you tonight, this is really gonna be an as-needed position when we have students who have significant medical needs who we're gonna service within the district. Those could be changing, toileting, feeding, G-tubes and stuff that would really fall out of the range where you need some level of expertise, higher than just a typical paraprofessional. We currently have one student who does require this in the district. It didn't pass, it has been served by an agency. And as you can imagine, the agency fees are much more expensive than paying an in-district person. And also you don't really get the same level, in my opinion, of commitment and the ability to really instruct and kind of move that person in the position so they can best meet the needs of the student. So we really like to move this forward in order to be able to pursue our own staff whenever this is needed for an in-district position. I think the prior CNA and the reason we went out for it was due to COVID and the lack of medical professionals that were even available in the field. But I really hope that we're gonna really turn the tide in that direction to be able to hire an in-district person.
And would, so budgetary impact, if any?
It, it'll come out of Mike's budget. Specialized, it'll come out of Mike's budget.
Okay.
Yeah, but what you're saying is it's gonna take the place of paying for an agency person to come in. So it might already be in the budget anyway.
Yeah, it would be a saving.
Similar to the example Dawn just raised for.
Yep.
Move something over here to do, and hopefully save something. Okay, great. Can I get a motion to approve the CNA job description as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Second job description is HR benefits coordinator. We've talked about HR. What we have seen since our breach is the lack of people, people that can do HR and benefits in our office. Everybody in my office multitasks and, and there's no person. And when our payroll specialist left, they left a void as far as someone to do benefits. We've created this job description, George can, can go into a little bit, but we'd like this approved as well so we can move forward with this position.
Yeah, so, so the reason why this is a, this is a lengthy and it's an intensive job description that you're looking at, however, it does symbolize what it is that we need. When you look at the interconnectedness, interconnectivity, I guess you'd say, between what happens from payroll, what happens from HR, what happens from accounts payable, what happens from the accountant, we really need one person to be able to galvanize that to say that this is the HR benefits coordinator for the district. It has been highlighted now that we've had some issues and we've had some changes. But if you just look at retirement, if you work for us and you work in a capacity that's, let's say, you're young and you're a paraprofessional, you might get a retirement piece that is very different than if you work for Plymouth County Retirement or if you work for Mass Teachers Retirement System. So there is a lot of it. We have over 540 employees, both part-time and full-time, and we need to coordinate this in a person. This is not gonna be a director position, but this is a position that is going to be one that is, is one that is commensurate with the, the salary, would be commensurate with what the person doing the job needs to do because the job is very involved. And it goes from onboarding, it goes from all the way to when you retire or someone passes away or the, you know, execution of the agreements that you have for insurance. So it's, it's high time we do that. And it's high time that we do it in a way that's streamlined and specific so that we can be a more efficient operation. I will say that this is not gonna be a hit to the budget because it is within the existing budget because we had a director-level position that was a resignation, that was a, with Mike coming in, Michael Loesch coming in, we were able to restructure so that, that the, the salaries built into the budget already and it will be less than the salary that's built into the budget. But you are looking at close to six figures for this position as a salary range because that's what's needed to be competitive.
So, so I was just gonna say, and I'll get to you, I was just gonna say, I was curious what the salary was because if you hadn't said what you just said, I was gonna suggest that there's no way you're gonna get someone in the HR field in the current market.
I mean, to be honest with you, we're ballpark, you know, 95, 110, somewhere around there.
In the HR, this, this specific HR type role right now, like, it's like every other position, hard to find, so.
Yes.
Yes.
We used to have an HR person years ago. And as a former union person, this is so important to have and it's been sorely missed by the employees of this district. To put it on the backs of everybody, it was split up. I mean, Michelle took the course, everybody was taking HR courses to try to help out and do this. It is so sorely needed, everybody, just, I can tell you from the other side looking in. It just, it helps with, even with negotiations, it, you know, it gives you a sounding board for both sides, for school committee and for the employees. But to take care of the new employees coming in, as George said, and the, the amount of work that goes into when somebody retires, it's a, it's tremendous amount. And because there are different retirement systems in here, you know, we have Plymouth County, you have the mass teachers, you have all these other, you know, this is, I just really can't emphasize enough how much this is needed. And I know that the WHGA would be thrilled to have this person in here.
So I would be looking for a motion to approve the job description.
So moved.
Second, any additional discussion? All those in favor? Any?
Yay, okay.
Alright, where are we? Subcommittee reports?
Yep.
Okay, so regional agreement committee. So we had a little bit of a delay. I had reached out to the Hanson Finance Committee and they were having a hard time getting a forum because they had some folks that were away, one serving in a deployment. So they weren't able to really pull together a meeting until the Hanson Town Meeting, which they just had. So they are appointed, good to go, and I did send out a note. So we are planning on having a meeting. I think I got everyone, I think Frank said he's got something going on. I don't know if we can find a different time, but right now the plan is to have that group meet at least initially to get organized and get things going on Wednesday, November 30th at 5:30. So prior to the end of the month, we will kick off the regional agreement committee and start that work going forward. Building committee?
I guess that's me.
Yes, please.
We had another meeting yesterday. We are moving forward with a little bit of difficulty because we're having lease issues between the MSBA and what they're requiring and what the Whitman, the town side wants to do, wants to agree to. So hopefully there's gonna be another meeting with Jeff and George or whoever and the powers that be, the head of MSBA, to try to iron it out. I personally have a couple of suggestions for them, but, you know, I'm only a front seat. We're also, we received another presentation by AI3. We have to make a decision by January on what we're going to be presenting because it has to go to the MSBA by March 2nd, I believe is the date it has to be presented. So because of February vacation, that kind of limits the time that we have to make a certain decision. So between January and February, whether it's going to, what kind of building it's gonna be. It has already been agreed that it will be a three-story building because that was actually a budget consideration and it was a much more concise footprint. So of course it is less money. So that was one budget that helped for us. So we are continuing, the working group is gonna be meeting this week or next week. They put out a bunch of dates. So that's the smaller group that makes some suggestions to AI3 and then comes back to the big building committee. So hopefully we can move forward. We are hoping, the plans are there and we have the presentation of whether it's gonna be five through eight or six through eight with or without an auditorium. So that's what the discussion is. So there's four plans. All three stories, but four plans.
Okay, thank you. Operations and capital?
Thanks. We met tonight at 5:30. Got an update on the town meeting, warrant articles, Whitman approved the security card access, that will go before Hanson at their next town meeting. Updates on playground completions at Conley and DeVal. Update on DeVal roof as far as just keeping an eye on that clawback because it has changed with, over the years. Let me see. Whitman Middle School, just keeping an eye on the air quality due to any mold that might be creeping up and doing mitigation or just prevent, prevention with that. Hanson Middle School, I had on the agenda for CPA application for the field because I spoke with a representative of the Hanson Park and Rec of the fields that Josh Cutler had gotten approved with the state, 200,000. So I wanted to add it on here that if there was a way the district could support that or just be involved in that because it's an earmark for the town of Hanson, but it's at one of our schools. So just Jeff had, you know, mentioned he'd continue to work, you know, and whatever information we can get on that.
John, can you elaborate on that? That there's $200,000 for a new field at the middle school? And we're just sitting on that?
Correct. The state has approved it in the budget and it's going to be, you know, provided to the town of Hanson. I spoke with Pepper Santa Lucia and he had mentioned that Hanson Youth Football, where they use the Indian Head Field and it's quite sandy and not very grassy, that perhaps there could be a joint effort with additional funds through CPA in Hanson and this earmark. So a combination of the $200,000 that is approved with the state, that was from Josh Cutler, and then potential CPA funds, that those could be combined and a possible, you know, combination of two fields at Hanson Middle School, soccer and/or football. You know, nothing's decided, it's just a conversation. And I just reached out to him because I had seen it as part of the Hanson CPA and just said, you know, it's, it's, you're, you know, you're talking about things at the school and if there's something we can be involved in or help with and facilitate that in any way, not speaking for any budgetary or monetary, but just, you know, it's fields at the schools. So I don't know, Jeff, do you wanna?
So I was just, I had, I had operations reach out. And I got back, as soon as decisions are made, direct committee chairperson, Adam Valkovic's gonna be in touch with me. So I, I, it's their fields, I assume they're gonna talk to us as they go through, but I haven't seen the specs yet. And I'll report out if I do, so.
That would be great, that would be fabulous. Yeah. All purpose.
And then we just touched on high school, you know, just working on some maintenance of the fields out here. And then just added, we have a policy in the district about inventory, so just getting a clear understanding of the vehicles that we have and equipment as well as the technology. And I think it's helpful, short-term, long-term, we talk about this budgetary preparing, you know, forecasting what our needs may be in regards to inventory, vehicles, equipment, so forth.
I, I think just to, at Hanson Town Meeting, I think the key cards were approved, weren't they?
I don't think they were on.
It didn't make it to that warrant because the original warrant was for October 3rd.
I don't think they were.
I swear it was on, I don't know.
We can pull it up.
Yeah.
Oh.
I remember, I remember seeing it and, and thinking.
Nobody's told me.
I, I remember seeing it on there and.
It's okay, that's great.
Thinking to myself.
I just didn't see it on the warrant, so.
It was in a insert.
Oh, okay.
So like a blue sheet, I, I mean, memory is a funny, funny thing.
Because we approved it at our October meeting and the warrant had already been created for the one that, meeting that didn't have a quorum on October 3rd, so.
If they did an insert.
It was in, there was an insert, a blue.
Oh.
I mean, I'm.
We can reach out to Lisa.
I will, absolutely.
And that's why I didn't see it online. I think I tried to find it online.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I could certainly be wrong asleep, but I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was late because I was at parent teacher conferences.
Right.
I don't know, I missed that part.
Yeah, but there was no conversation, like it just was through.
Negotiations?
So negotiations, we are tentatively scheduling, well, we will have an executive session in December for our December meeting. Unit B is, is done, unit D is done, and George is coming pretty close to unit C. So hopefully we'll have all three ready for, for approval or ratification with the school committee in December.
Excellent. Policy?
Policy, I'll speak for Chris. If you don't, do you want to jump?
Yeah, for you.
No, Michelle's on.
So we have three, actually, the MAC policy newsletter, I'm gonna ask to pass over because one of John's issues came up and it's in here. So I wanna dive into it a little bit, so I'm gonna ask to pass over the MAC policy update. David put together the Student Outreach Coordinator policy. And I believe everybody has had an opportunity to go through it. We're looking for a motion to approve that, the policy that he wrote.
Yeah, what, do you know the policy that, do you remember what one is it?
Yeah, so.
What, what, what policy number?
I'm pretty sure it's JIB.
JIB.
And it would be cross-referenced with BCA and MGL, Chapter 71, Section 38M, which is the stupid.
But it's JIB that we're voting on.
JIB, yeah.
So then I'd be looking for a motion to accept the revisions for JIB.
Point of order, actually. Just, we have a policy that we should have a first read on this before we actually vote something, so just that. And then it should come back at the next meeting for discussion and vote?
You can do that.
If that's okay?
I'm just seeing it.
So, and maybe, yeah, so I think, and maybe the other thing we can do is just make sure that it's fully updated in the JIB format, so. But it sounds like policy was good with it.
I was just gonna say, we, David presented it to us, policy, and we are behind it, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Like, but just to give you that background.
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, I was looking.
I think it just, more than anything else, it really just.
Any policy requires multiple readings?
We have, yeah. We have a policy BG that says school committee policy development.
Yep.
And it says that, you know, you.
So it says any revision?
It needs to be scheduled on an agenda, so.
But would that be in the policy subcommittee?
No, on the school committee agenda, it has to go before the full committee.
No, I know, but like.
As informational distribution, and then the second meeting is discussion and the third is action.
And that's BG?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's for a revision?
Policy adoption.
So we already have a policy?
So we already have, yeah.
We're not adopting a policy, we're revising a policy.
Or development, so I don't.
This is just streamlining.
But this didn't even say JIB.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I wasn't sure what.
So let's all take a look at BG, and it's late and Jeff's gonna be late to pick up his kid if we're not careful, so. At the same time, so maybe we can just make sure that we follow the same format and let's let's put it on for next time.
Right, because what we're, the point we're at in our agenda is just policy subcommittee update and you're asking for a vote on a.
So it should be a separate.
Policy, it should have been its own agenda item.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just looking at the fact it was in the folder, so. But I agree, we should put it on the agenda separately, so that's fine.
So then the next one, we have to push to December 7th also?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's not on the agenda as a separate adoption, that's just our update.
The captain gowns?
No, the federal grant.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we have to push that also.
So when did you meet?
Last week.
Okay, so that's fine. But so, yes, let's just make sure we add the separate policies to the agenda.
But it, yeah, but everything is in there, so the, so I guess I'll speak, but the WHRSD FY22 federal grant policies, that's one that we're going to be looking for approval for next time. And just to give you background, it's something from Desi that is essentially a formality that we have to adopt. And so we looked at it in policy sub and it's here, so we'll be looking to adopt that.
Okay. Good, so we can do this next time.
And we didn't talk about the captain gowns, so we, where are we at with that?
So no, we, we're not putting a policy together for that?
That was going to be recommended, Dr. Jones was going to make.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else in policy?